All right.
I think it's going to the speaker. Or, I mean, like if, if you didn't have a microphone, it would go to you. Well, I don't know. Okay, it's five. Yeah. Okay, it's 5:30, so let's go ahead and get started. Um, we'd like to welcome everybody to our work session, uh, for the city council meeting, Tuesday, September 6th, 2022. Let the record show that, uh, all members of the city council are here with the exception of Council Hansen. She is, uh, going to be joining us late. Council Hilton is joining us via, uh, WebEx. I'm going to do the invocation tonight, and Council Hansen will do the Pledge of Allegiance if she is here. I'm not aware of any public comment tonight. Anyone else? Uh, presentations and reports, I have just a little bit I'll talk about in the meeting. And we'll do the council assignment reports then also. Consent items, consideration to approve the meeting minutes from the August 16th, council special meeting and the council truth in taxation meeting. Are there any changes or corrections to the minutes? I had one. Um, one of the comments is from Linda Faff, and her name is correct on the roster, but it was probably hard to hear what she said.
Yeah, he said that one too.
Okay. Okay. Otherwise, though, great job. I mean, I think I felt like it really captured everything that was said and kind of the tone of things. All right, the second consent item is a consideration to set a public hearing for a budget amendment. Uh, Mr. Brooks? Or Cody, Mr. Carden?
We gotta sit that up for the.
What budget amendment is this?
Just for the property tax increase for the public safety. So if you remember, that money is just, we can't really use it. And so this property tax or this budget amendment so that we can allocate that out to like the police department and the fire department.
So we'll just have a public hearing. We're gonna set the public hearing tonight for next meeting?
Whenever you guys would like. That's what we were thinking, just so we could get the ball rolling sooner than later.
Okay. And that's what that budget amendment is for, and that's what the public hearing will be.
There might be a few other little like cleanup things that end up in it, but that's the intention is for that property tax increase, so we can allocate that out for the public safety.
Okay. So we'll do those consent items as two separate consent items. Um, all right, action items. We'll be having a public hearing tonight to receive and consider comments, uh, regarding a proposed updated roadway vacation petition for Cozy Dell Drive and some other roads. Um, Mr. Eggit.
Thank you. This is a follow-up. As you remember, at our last meeting, I briefly outlined what was going on here with this requested vacation for all these roads. This is a request by America First Federal Credit Union and working with AWA Engineering. Tim Snyderman represents America First and Natalie Nichols represents AWA. This, uh, matter came before the Planning Commission initially on May 10th, uh, for a public hearing to vacate at the conclusion of that meeting. They made a recommendation to city council to approve the vacation request. Following that, America First and AWA realized that one of the roadways was, was not there that needed to be included in that vacation request being 4800 South. So that was added, and we brought it back to the Planning Commission on August 9th for another public hearing to allow, um, the commentary. And at the conclusion of that meeting, the recommendation from the Planning Commission was for city council approval of the proposed vacation plat. Um, since it does involve pro- public properties noted in the packet and per guidance of Mr. Brooks, we, we felt very appropriately the city council should have a public hearing as well prior to any discussion on the request. So that, that's where it's at. We did advertise in accordance with, uh, city and state standards. And prior to even this meeting now, we have not received any commentary from any, any members of the public for this meeting tonight. Um, the property zoning is M1, and, uh, the general plan guidance is special use district light industrial business park for what it's worth as it relates to the other planning, um, efforts in this area that does comply with what America First is trying to accomplish long-term up there. Uh, you'll see the ordinance document in your packet and the actual vacation plat therein is exhibit one, and then, uh, more drilled in areas of part of that vacation as a component of that plat you'll see in there. And then you'll see the, the reviews that follow. No concerns from city staff, and even the engineer has no specific commentary on the vacation plat itself. So, and then you'll see the minutes following thereafter from the Planning Commission meeting and then the application that's tied to the vacation and subdivision and the public hearing notification documentation. So there's everything for you. Figured it'd be easier now than, than in the main session to go through it all over again. So, there you go.
Other questions or comments on that? We'll be, okay, Council Stevens?
Okay, 4800 South was added. If I'm, if I'm looking at that correctly, that's the main access to, for the power to get to their substation. So if they vacate, uh, 4800, how, is, is there gonna be a private access?
It's a fair comment. They're actually gonna rededicate 4800 with a different access off of the roundabout as part of the subdivision plat. So if you look at subdivision plat, you'll see a new arm that comes up and off in a little bit different configuration, but then links back into old 4800. So it's vacating old 4800, rededicating new 4800. And the reason for that is because the old alignment is not the same alignment that would be explored as part of the new setup with the roundabout connection. So if you look at the subdivision plat, you'd see that, that configuration. And we'll cover that obviously the next, the next item anymore.
Kinda point that out because the drawings were quite difficult, uh, for me, and maybe other people get it easily, but.
There, there's a lot here. There is a lot.
There was an Google photo or aerial photo that was in the RDA packet, I think it was already a packet, that I found to be much more useful, if, but it just didn't go north enough.
And that's probably more of an aerial drawing. Obviously, in this case, this is what we typically see with engineered plat drawings, so maybe that's why it didn't quite visualize this clearly what was going on. So.
Thank you. So the second half of this will be, uh, consideration to approve ordinance 955, which should approve a proposed roadway vacation. So this is approving, uh, that ordinance after the public hearing. Any other questions on that? Thank you, Mr. Eggit. All right, next. Consideration of ordinance 956 approving the AFCU corporate campus subdivision property located approximately 4624 South and 4724 South, 1500 West, requested by America First. Mr. Eggit.
Okay. Yeah, this is part two of, of obviously the previous discussion. At this point, this would then be the submitted, uh, dedication plat that would not only establish subdivided lots one and two and parcels A and B, but also reestablish, um, new right-of-way areas and roads for the city as well as what I was discussing the last item, the 4800 South connector. You can kind of see it on this plat, drawing that arm coming in as we go to that. The Planning Commission did review the subdivision request on May 24th, 2022, and after reviewing and discussion, discussing it, recommended city council approval of the proposed small subdivision plat. Uh, again, M1 zoned area, and again, the general plan guidance, special use district light industrial business park. See ordinance number 956 document found after the executive summary, commentary from staff. Uh, there are no issues or concerns noted from city staff. The city engineer did note, and you'll see a red mark up showing an easement for storm drain sewer easement that just needs to be adjusted to be complete and accurate, as well as making sure that the existing sewer line is specified as a sewer easement across the property for existing needs currently on the site. Um, but with that, the city engineer is comfortable with recommending approval with the understanding that clear that final MLR show those easements where they need to be prior to any signatures or recording of that document. So that's where that sits. See, following the red line, um, the Planning Commission minutes, the application fee paid, and then the, again, the subdivision document, just the, the one with the red lines on it. So that's, that's what's submitted there.
Okay, any questions on that? All right. Uh, item number three, consideration of ordinance 957 to approve a small subdivision amendment for the Riverdale Center 5 subdivision, amended property located at approximately 40454113 South Riverdale Road. Mr. Eggit.
Thank you. Sorry I brought so much to haul at once, but I appreciate your patience with me. CCA Cornwasser Group, they're represented by Jake Tatum on this one. This is an amended small subdivision plat, um, as you noted at the address there in a regional commercial C3 zone. Uh, the, the Planning Commission reviewed this one on May 24th, 2022, uh, for the small subdivision amended plat proposal. At the conclusion of discussion in the matter, made a recommendation to city council to approve the proposed small subdivision plat. The ownership on this property in the county records is Bonnie View LLC, which they own lot four, which is the RC Willie property. If you're curious, the remaining three lots are owned, um, by Riverdale Center North LLC. Um, the, the intent, and I don't know why my screen did that, apologize. The intent is to redraw the lines, establish a better layout as far as the lots are concerned to afford, um, I guess you could say better accommodating development of lot one as well as future ownership needs of the other three lots, just in case you're wondering why they're asking that. The general plan use for the area is set as planned commercial high, and the proposed subdivision does comply with the land use designation. Obviously, it, it doesn't direct land use as much as with a subdivision, but it still is applicable. Ordinance number 957 references the small subdivision amendment. I think Mr. Brooks might addition just a few, um, amendments to the ordinance prior to, to considering approval of that, and I'll let him talk to that when he feels it's appropriate. And then you'll see the review from city staff, no concerns from any staff. City engineer did note that the, the improvement drawings boundary, the legal boundary on the, um, improvement drawings from the actual development of lot one, which is also trying to work through itself with the actual site planning for the, um, townhome project. That property description isn't exactly lining up with the subdivision description, so he wants to make sure that obviously both boundary descriptions match correctly. So that's something that needs to be cleared with the MLR prior to, to it being recorded. So that's what he's noting there. If you're curious what that comment is. But he is comfortable with it saying it meets all these standards, and he recommends approval of it with the understanding that that needs to be resolved. You'll see the application found thereafter in the fee paid and then the actual subdivision document itself. So with that, that, that's everything that's aligned with that.
Just, just quickly, um, I made two amendments to the original, and the one that's in your packet, and it's, it's pretty minor, but in the heading, wherever it references Riverdale Center 5 subdivision, it'll be comma amended. So in the heading and the first whereas clause, I inserted the word amended in both of those just because this is an amended subdivision, and just for clarification sakes, that's why we put, and that's what it is titled. So, uh, we didn't have the one that's in your packet does not contain that, but when we do the actual motion, this is the one that the mayor would sign, make that as part of your motion. We, we normally, a lot of these things like this, we pick up on the Monday after. We try to get those packets out, and we're going so fast, and then we do another read on these things on Monday, but where yesterday was a holiday, a couple of those little things got missed like that, so.
Any other questions on that? Okay. All right. Number four. Consideration to approve the final site plan for Shake Shack Riverdale, located approximately 4142 South Riverdale Road, as requested by Shake Shack and McNeil Engineering. Mr. Eggit?
Thank you. Uh, Ted Ditas with McNeil Engineering will represent their interest on this project. He's been the site engineer for the entire project. Uh, this is on the old Farmers Insurance Building Lot Site that's currently, uh, owned by HMP Investments. It's in the community commercial C2 zone, wherein it required a conditional use permit approval from the Planning Commission. Uh, it did receive that, uh, back on April 26, 2022. No public hearing is, is required to consider site plan proposal. On August 9th, the matter came before the Planning Commission for final site plan supplemental review. At the conclusion of the discussion, they recommended, uh, city council, uh, favorable approval of the site plan with the understanding resolved outstanding staff and engineering, engineering concerns satisfactorily. Um, the proposed development, like I said, is in a C2 zone, and the general plan guidance for it is set as planned commercial high. The proposed site plan project would comply with the land use, so that it's a good fit. It matches what's around it. Looking at staff review comments, I don't have anything in mind. You'll see a little bit of dialogue between myself and, and Mr. Douglas. He has a few review comments. I requested to know what his guidance was on that. He said he would be fine with it coming to city council for consideration. Obviously, that's some, there's some things there that we often see that are, I wouldn't say, um, I don't want to trivialize them. They're somewhat minor. They're things that are pretty typical as far as when, when someone puts a storm detention basin in a parking lot, they have to meet state standards. That's where you'll see the injection well permit, notice of intent filed with state, and the drainage systems is one we see on all of the projects. He did note, uh, include pipe size, a stormwater connection pipe. He wants to know that in existing, some of the existing utilities tied to water, peak demands for sewer and water. Um, obviously, the water shares, which frequently we've been seeing, be, be something to discuss, and then making sure that there's a, a clarification on water service line and meter to be the same size. Um, other than that, the police and fire don't have any issues that they've noted, and, uh, you'll see from the city engineer, really, really minor thing, North Arrow is just pointing in the wrong, wrong direction. So obviously, on all improvement drawings, we need, need to make sure that that's pointing in the right direction. See the application thereafter, fee being paid, uh, review comments, response comments, I should say, from the project engineer, and then you'll see some, uh, site depictions of what the building looks like. I did fill the note too, that this did go through a design review committee, um, review and was, uh, approved by the design review committee with the coloration, the materials, landscape signage, the typical things that they would review on the design review committee. Following that, you'll see the design drawings, and then near the end of the design drawings, you'll see the landscaping that's proposed for the site. And with that, that's, that's everything I think needs to be covered at this point. Unless there's questions. Thank you.
I did have a question about that water service line. It seems like they're still kind of pushing back a little bit on that, but, uh, I mean, Sean was pretty clear, um, but it's got to match, right?
Yeah, I mean, his comment is very clear, and it, the key component there is, there's really not anything the developers can do without Sean Douglas being satisfied in that there, there, there's no allowance to mobilize. There's no allowance to even do site clearing. They can't even get a building permit. So really, those things needing to be addressed. We control all those cards, meeting our standard until such time that they get permission to do anything else.
But we probably have to be pretty clear in the motion that all those.
Certainly.
All those stipulations need to be met, right? Because I, it, it makes me a little nervous. Uh, you know, Council Hansen said that she.
Yeah, she's been concerned about that too, but, um, we've never, that's a hard no before they get a building permit if those things haven't been met. And the only, and the reason why we would do that is because if they want to challenge us as staff, they're gonna have to bring that in and appeal it to you. So, I mean, they're still gonna have to come back in here if they think they're gonna get around that. We've never done that. I mean, that's, we, we always have these things. I mean, they're usually pretty small, and they work out. One of the things that's nice about it is it keeps the process going. I know a lot of cities dig their heels in and say, no, get this finalized before it comes in here, but, um, if we do that, then all these things stop. And, you know, I, I guess you could take that approach if that's what you want. We don't care, but we like to keep these things moving so that it's the chicken and the egg thing. Once they feel that you guys have signed off on it, they feel a lot better. They go out there, get their loans, and this thing moves and it runs smoothly. So, you know, it's just a matter of preference on how you want us to go about that, but that's the way we've always done it. We've never had issues with it, and we don't budge on those things. That's gotta be signed off before, before they get their building permit, so it's not gonna happen if that's what the concern is, so.
And I, I think, I mean, we have to be careful to make sure we treat everybody the same anyway, so you can't really be making any allowances, whatever.
No, we're not cutting any slack on that. That's, that's not an option. If they want to peel that, I mean, we gotta follow the code and the laws. We do that on everything. If they don't like that, they can come in and talk to you guys, but till that's changed, we're not, we're not budging on it, so is what it is.
All right. Yeah.
Basically, it's, it's, I think you answered it, but I, I just, has, has the attitude always been, we'll work with you, we'll put the process in play, because, you know, my, my thought was is, why are we even considering this if there's still these outstanding issues? And that I think you kind of addressed that kind of.
Yeah, we, what, what happens, just for example, look, so last Wednesday, we brought, this came up in our department heads, and what we always do is we ask the department heads who have some concerns if we feel that they're bigger ones. We asked Sean, or do you have an issue with this? Do we need to put it off? Nope, we're good. Let's go. So unless he's felt good about it, we wouldn't, we wouldn't even bring it to this point. So Sean didn't have any issues with it. I checked with him again this afternoon. He's still fine, so, um, there are things that we can work out. I mean, they're probably less than a month, this'll all be resolved anyway, so.
And I guess where we meet infrequently, this, if we approve it, you know, with those stipulations, and those guys can just kind of work with them.
That's the whole idea, just to keep them going.
Then they can work somewhat independent of the council, because council's already approved it, then they just work with the department head or the engineer.
Right. And that approval is crucial. A lot of times, to get their construction loans going so they can get their construction loan timelines in place and get things mobilized on site, obviously satisfying our requirements, but if we delay them two weeks, that just delays their ability to get their financing that much more. And clearly, that then delays the ability for the city to get tax income, right? Because obviously, the site's now delayed that much longer for them to get their financing in place. So there's kind of this weird thing where things kind of need to work out simultaneously, which is a benefit for their site to move faster, and then obviously, we'll start to get ourselves tax income sooner. So, so it's, it's hand-in-hand effort trying to make this thing go.
So when you make your motion, you make it contingent upon those things being resolved, then it's you saying the same thing we're saying. So then they had, they didn't, they, they, there's nowhere for them to go. It's, it's a done deal at that point, so.
Okay. Item number five, discussion regarding water and drought rates, usage and status. This is an item I asked them to put on here. Um, when I saw the July water revenue, revenues come in, that was our first month, um, having the new drought rates in place, and I felt like we had collected more money than what kind of was, was expected. And when I asked Mr. Douglas about it, he said, uh, people had not really changed their usage that much, and so we didn't see the big drop that maybe we were thinking we would see, which would have dropped our revenues. So we wanted to kind of see if the, and has the data kind of come in a little bit for?
We've got some things, but I don't know that we're, we can really give you a good opinion. We, we need almost a month really to be able to collect this stuff, so it'd almost be next month's first meeting, where we could give you a little bit more of a better idea. And we could set it for an action item at that point in case.
October's first meeting?
Yeah.
That would only give us one month where we could waive the fees.
Yeah. What, you think we'd go any sooner than that, Cody, or?
The drought.
Does that have to be in a, in the calendar year, or is it the fiscal year?
Well, it's.
In, in what, in what timeline are you looking, or we say we have one month?
Well, the drought rates go away at the end of October anyway.
Yeah.
So if, I was hoping that we could look at what we collected in August.
I mean, we can look and see. My thought was we'd keep this on, on the agendas, and then if we can come in and give you a little bit more with, with data and stuff, then maybe you could make a decision earlier. I just don't know for sure what we'll have.
So it's about keeping this, uh, till we break even with the drought rates, with inflated drought rates?
Well, we raised it 40% because we needed to, and then we instituted a drought rate because we thought they were gonna drop their usage down by about 50%. We still need to collect the same amount, but I felt like, hey, we collected more than was expected. And so I thought, hey, if we do that again in August, you know, maybe, maybe we can get rid of that 50% for September and October if we've collected enough, because people have used more water than we expected them to. And we collected more than I, than we expected to. Now, Mr. Douglas said we typically collect a lot of our revenue in the summer anyway. That's when we really, you know, make enough money to run the water fund. So, Mr. Carden was gonna do some research and say, well, how much more than normal did we collect, you know? And so maybe next meeting? Okay. And we could go, it would be possible to go back and, and take them off for September and October at that meeting in two weeks?
It'd, it'd be possible if you, if you're, the, the early numbers we received doesn't indicate that. I don't, I don't think we're gonna see it. I don't, we were hoping, but I don't think we are, to be honest with you.
All right.
Yeah, yeah, like I think you can make it effective whenever you, you want. We really need it effective for a whole month. We can't really split months, so that's gonna be.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, no.
But yes, and we should be able to give you a pretty good report, I think, next meeting.
But my, my point was, I mean, we're in September. Can you make it effective September 1st that the drought rate went away? Because we haven't really sent out the bills. If we see the numbers that you're thinking it's not gonna go that way, but, uh, okay. All right.
We'll keep it on, we'll keep you updated on. I mean, it doesn't hurt us to keep talking about it anyway, just so you guys are informed on what we're seeing, so.
Yeah, I, I, I'd like to see some, some good hard numbers, what we collected in July, what we collected for August. You know, this is what we normally collect. This is how much we collect with the drought rate, and so that these guys can make a decision if they want to move away from that, or just early. We'd just be moving away from it early, and maybe not go as high next year on the drought rates. We'll see. All right. Item number six, discussion regarding the senior fees at the community center. This was an item, uh, requested by, uh, Council Hansen and Council, Council Hilton. Do, do we want to hold most of this discussion in the main meeting, Council Hilton, or did you want to say some stuff now?
I think you're on mute, Steve.
Thank you. This is really Annie's request, but I, uh, let me repeat what she told me as much as I can get it right. She had been approached by some senior citizens that were a little distressed that we had eliminated their free use of, of the facilities that was included in some of the benefits the city had afforded seniors, and we had done that inadvertently by, uh, with our fee schedule adoption. And there was no discussion at the time of how this affected the, that issue of free use for seniors, and so we just wanted to put that on the agenda for tonight to have the council decide which direction they want to go now that we specifically know the issue.
Okay.
And I've got Mr. Taylor here that can address that as well, so we'll just take care of it in the meeting. See what questions come up, and maybe Annie will be here by then.
Yeah, that would be good. Okay, we'll, 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 um, discuss that, the bulk of that in the main meeting.
Sounds good.
All right, uh, we'll move on to comments. Uh, anything for this meeting from the city council? From the city staff, anything? Chief?
Uh, went back to Wisconsin last week and did the final on the new heavy rescue that we're gonna receive from Weaver County. Looks great, and the big thing is I wanted to invite you and families to come out. We do a push-in ceremony, which dates back to when the fire trucks were horse-driven, and so they couldn't attach the horses and push them back in, so they pushed the truck back in every time. So it's kind of a tradition that all fire departments do now, and it's special. So, uh, once we get that date, it should be in transit here in the next couple of days from Wisconsin on the road, so kind of a pain to drive a fire truck that far, but we'll, uh, send that date out.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Chief, thanks for sending that, those pictures. Appreciate it then.
I had just a couple of quick items. Mr. Eggit, do we have a grand opening date for the new Maverick?
Not yet. I just know it's sometime about middle of September is what I'm hearing right now.
I talked to Jeff Woody today, and he figured, I think he said the 15th, is what they were shooting for.
15th is the date, but I don't have it confirmed yet. That's why I say middle of September, because it could be the 20, excuse me, the 21st. It could be within that week, so I don't know the exact date.
Right. Well, those of us that have jobs, uh, would appreciate as much as possible.
I know. I will push strongly for ribbon cutting or grand opening of some kind, so I'll push for that.
That's fine, and just, I mean, we'll do our best to be there.
Sounds good.
I hope we can be there. I like, I like to beat at those, but, you know, it's, it's gonna be kind of short notice of, it's already the 6th. Uh, one other quick thing. And I'm glad Chief Sholly's here. I had a request today. I don't know if this is possible, um, but they just said, hey, um, we've got the football and softball team practicing up at TH Bell. It's 100 degrees, and they were wondering if there's any chance we could bring the fire truck by tomorrow and spray them off about 5 o'clock. I said, I don't know. I said, I can ask.
Card of fire. That's Washington Terrace's area.
Yeah, yeah. I, I, and, and, uh, yeah, do, do with that what you would like, with that being Washington Terrace, so we do have a lot of kids that attend TH Bell, but, uh, I said it doesn't hurt to ask, so. You think that over and then, uh, let me know, and I'll respond to this person, so. Okay. What? No, no, he just, no, no, it wasn't my son. That's funny. He doesn't ought to play for either of those teams. Um, okay, and with that.
Is there a fire station open house? I saw a sign.
Yes, there is.
Yeah, 26.
26.
I mean, I knew about it. I saw the sign, but I thought.
It's in the newsletter.
Okay.
And, uh, thank you, Chief Brinkman, for, uh, alerting us to the, the block parties as well. Like, that's very helpful. Thanks for that, so. Okay, um, with that, we'll go ahead and adjourn the work session. Um, thank you for joining us. Thank you for joining us, Council Hanson, welcome.
Sorry.
That's okay, you made it, so, um, just before we get started for the next meeting, you are on for the pledge of allegiance, so.
We're just listening to Mike urge to take the packet anyway, so.
No, we weren't, thank you, Mr. Eggit, I appreciate what you do.
He has good information.
All right.
Probably coming up shortly again.
Okay, so. You ready, Ms. Maragoni, everything's up and running, cameras, everything going? He did? Get the cops to shoot him, okay. All right, we'd like to call to order the Riverdale City Council meeting for Tuesday, September sixth, twenty twenty-two. Please let the record show that all city council members are present. Uh, Council Hilton is joining us via WebEx. We will start off by having the pledge of allegiance by Council Ann Hanson, and then I will lead us in the invocation.
Close your eyes, repeat after me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our heavenly Father, we are grateful as we meet together tonight at the city council meeting, grateful for the circumstances under which we meet, for the freedoms we enjoy, for the opportunity we have to assemble and to govern ourselves as we see fit. We're grateful for the, the blessings that we all enjoy and the bountiful and, and time of plenty that we all live in. We ask at this time that I would bless the city council as they make decisions that they might be able to have the forethought and, and insight as to how their decisions will affect the residents and that they might choose wisely and make decisions that will be in the residents' best interest. We also ask a blessing upon our public safety workers and all the workers, uh, that work for the city. And we ask that thou would watch over and protect them, that they might all return home to their families each night. We're so grateful for Riverdale and we also ask a blessing on our residents and, uh, please bless them with the things that they need. And, uh, and we say this prayer in the name of Jesus Christ, amen. All right, we'll now have a time of public comment. This is an opportunity to address the city council. Uh, you can share your ideas or concerns, no action will be taken during the public comment. Uh, please try to limit your comments to three minutes. Uh, when you do approach the mic, please, uh, state your name and your city of residence.
Hi, I'm Shelby, this is my first time being here, so I might get a little stage fright. I'm kidding. I live in Riverdale, uh, and we've been here for about two years. Oh, Wen Green, thank you.
How do you spell that?
W E N Green. So, yeah, our favorite color is not grin, a lot of people say Wen grin. Anyway, um, when we moved into our house, we had like this trailer park area, well, RV parking area on the side of our house, except for the curb wasn't cut, uh, and there wasn't an approach. Um, we're trying to fill in the approach, but we're newlyweds and we have a budget. So, uh, we've like gotten a couple bids and stuff, but it's really expensive if we replace the sidewalk to be six inches. Um, so I'm basically just requesting a variance exception, whatever it's called, I'm not familiar with city terms. Um, I have some examples of like what the city approach rules are, um, and what equates to a sidewalk replacement. And then I focus on some areas on the nine hundred improvement area, uh, that are a little outside of that to see if I could possibly get whatever exception they got, um, for that city project, um, for my property. Any questions? Would you like the document?
We don't usually interact a lot during the open communications, but yeah, you're, you're welcome to leave that document and, uh, the city will share that with us and we can discuss that and, and thank you. Thank you for taking the time, yeah, that'll be fine. Thank you for coming. Yeah, Council Arnold.
So this is kind of funny, but the reason I'm on the city council or ran for city council is that very thing. I thought you gotta be kidding me. I, I have to tear up a perfectly good sidewalk to get two inches further. And I don't know where you live in Riverdale.
Uh, eight hundred west.
So where, where I live, I got some road base to put under it and the ground was so hard, I couldn't even dig it up to put the road base in.
Yeah.
And so I started getting hassles from previous city people and I thought, you gotta be kidding me, this is crazy. So, so for your future, you'll be sitting up here someday. Because when, when the city, so this, the city's not perfect. And the thing is, I, I think that's one thing that's crazy because I do have somebody in my neighborhood that just brought in some concrete and they ran the cement truck over the, and it destroyed the sidewalk. So, I mean, there's reasons for that as well, but I, I, I think this thing is just crazy to someone. So anyway, I just wanted to tell you that, so save, save like fifteen hundred dollars, make some signs, come up with a cool slogan and be prepared to listen to people like you.
It will be like real life Parks and Rec, I hope you guys like it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. All right, we'll now move on to presentations and reports. I do have a, a couple of, well, one main item. You know, we had a tough meeting, last meeting, and made some hard decisions. And, uh, I'm not sure how much you guys hear about, um, what goes on in the city, but, uh, and I won't put Chief Brinkman on the spot, but, uh, we've had, we've had some pretty serious things happen in the past two weeks. We've had a shooting at Denny's. We've had, uh, in my neighborhood, a bunch of car thefts, well, no, a, a bunch of car break-ins and one car theft. We had a sexual assault, um, with the SWAT team, did the SWAT team show up to that? That's with the SWAT team. And so I want you guys to take some comfort in the decision that you guys had to make, um, two weeks ago. You know, it's, it's easy for people to come and kind of Monday morning quarterback the situation and say, well, they should have done this, they should have done this five years ago, they should have done this eight years ago, six years ago, two years ago. It's real easy to come back and just say, we should have done that. But, um, you guys are the ones that are sitting in the seats up here and it's not all Parks and Rec, okay? It's been a tough couple of weeks. I mean, I've filled it a lot of really, really angry emails from people and also some really sad ones. And I've answered them and I feel fine with, with the, with the decision that you guys made. And, uh, I feel like you guys made the right decision. So I just wanted to make sure you knew that we have a huge need for some police officers. And even though you don't hear it or see all the stuff that's going on, that's just the highlights. I mean, the amount of re, time and work that those reports would have taken, probably just shut our police down for, you know, for hours, if not days, filling out the reports from those incidents. And so, um, it was hard and, and we'll get through it and things are calming down already, but you guys, you made the right decision, so. And then next, next meeting, hopefully, if you guys approve it, we'll have a public hearing to spend some of that money on some new police officers, so thank you for that. Next item is the council assignment reports. Uh, anybody have any? Council Hanson?
All the rich is here, didn't I see Rich? Yeah. Um, the youth city council had some applicants apply for this new upcoming year. They have a meeting scheduled next Thursday at the community center at four thirty if any of the councils interested in participating or getting to know the youth that we are hoping will be involved this next year. And if you will spread the word, it'd be nice to have more youth involved, so if you know any youth in your areas, send them that way. And then I just wanted to let you know, we went to the Bonneville welcoming parade.
Oh, yeah.
To represent Riverdale.
Homecoming, homecoming.
Homecoming parade, they had a big Riverdale sign on the truck with all the other, with the mayors from the other city and it went really well. They had a nice little crowd and, yeah, they were appreciative, so thanks for letting me.
They were happy to have you there, so.
It was nice, thanks, that's all I had.
Okay. Council Hilton, anything from you?
Just happy to be here, by the way, Bryn, would you move your microphone just a step closer because you cut out on occasion?
Okay, we'll try it there.
Thank you.
And just, uh, so everybody knows, Council Merrill does have kind of an assignment now. She is going to be working with kind of the veterans a little bit. We had a request, um, from some veterans that wanted to, uh, kind of get some projects going. And so we're hoping to, that she can help with that and kind of be the council member that kind of is the liaison to work with that stuff, so.
Did someone take Dave Leahy's place as kind of the leader?
No, we don't have anybody right now that's, that's a citizen member, kind of the lead of the Veterans Advisory Group. And that group is a little bit kind of disbanded, I think. We, we do have a lady that's really interested in kind of getting a veterans group going, but she doesn't want to be the chair. And so Council Merrill's going to work with her on that, so. All right, no other reports, we'll move on to consent items. Consideration to approve the meeting minutes from the August sixteenth, twenty twenty-two city council special meeting and the August sixteenth, twenty twenty-two council truth in taxation meeting. Are there any changes or corrections to those minutes?
I had two small ones, but I believe Michelle already made those changes.
Okay. Anything else? Seeing none, a motion to approve would be in order, Council Arnold?
Move to approve consent, I, or the, approve the meeting minutes from the August sixteenth, twenty twenty-two special meeting and truth in taxation meeting with the changes that Annie has put forth to Michelle.
We have a motion, do we have a second? We have a motion and a second, any discussion on the motion?
Yeah, what were the changes?
Oh, um, Linda Fass's name was just spelled wrong and, um, my comment at the end of one of the paragraphs just was missing a piece about how we, it would be the city council who determines the budget, it just didn't say city council by that.
We didn't, we didn't talk about that one, we only talked about Linda Fass.
Yeah, it was just those two, it was just a small addition, nothing really substantive, really.
So, motion's good with it.
Second, good? Okay. All in favor, say yes?
Yes.
Okay, all right, that passes unanimously. I guess we don't need to poll them on everything, I don't know. Okay. Uh, the second consent item is a consideration to set a public hearing for a budget amendment. This would be, uh, a public hearing to, uh, appropriate some of those funds from the tax increase and that needs to happen in order for us to hire those police officers. And, um, whoever makes this motion, if you want to put a date on it, uh, our next meeting would be fine. So, is there any comment on that?
Are we also going to address if, if there's going to be a change to the wat, I saw that the water fee schedule was going to be discussed tonight? Or any possible changes to senior fees, could that be included?
There would, all we put that for was just a discussion item tonight, so it wouldn't be any change on that part of it, so.
But I mean, could it, if we do have some discussion, could it be included in that public hearing?
Yeah, we could do it whatever, I mean, that's fine, too. I, I don't know that, yeah, we can see, I don't know what we'll have ready by then, but.
As long as it's, I mean, as long as we're vague enough and just say it's for budget amendments tonight.
If we needed it.
And we can include that in the packet in two weeks, okay?
Okay.
Okay, uh, a motion would be in order, Council Hanson?
I'll make the motion to set a public hearing for a budget amendment at our next scheduled city council meeting on September twentieth.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion on the motion? Okay, all in favor, say yes?
Yes.
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 All right, that passes unanimously, we'll have a public hearing in two weeks. Moving on to action items, we're going to have a public hearing tonight to receive and consider comments regarding proposed updated roadway vacation petition for Cozy Dell Drive, which is fifteen hundred west, forty-six fifty south, forty-six seventy-five south, forty-eight hundred south, thirteen hundred west and thirteen fifty west is located between approximately forty-eight hundred south and forty-four hundred south, Riverdale, Utah. This was requested by America First Federal Credit Union and AWA Engineering. We would need a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second, um, the public hearing is now open. All right, seeing no comments, we need a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
We have a motion? And a second, the public hearing is now closed. Uh, actually, we need to vote, we needed to vote on both those, didn't we? Sorry, let's back up a step. We need to vote on opening the public hearing, all those in favor, say yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, public hearing's open. Still no comments, all right, now let's have a motion to close it.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor, say yes?
Yes.
Okay, it's now closed, thank you. We'll now move on to action item one B, this is consideration of ordinance nine fifty-five to approve the proposed roadway vacation petition for Cozy Dell Drive, fifteen hundred west, and all those falling roads stated in the packet. Mr. Eggit?
Thank you. I'll just summarize super quick, uh, for the purposes of not belaboring the item for Mr. Arnold.
My comment was supposed to do.
America First Federal Credit Union in association, in association with AWA Engineering has applied for this, a request. The matter came before the planning commission on May tenth for the first public hearing regarding the request at the conclusion of planning commission recommended city council approval. And then it came back on August ninth with the inclusion of forty-eight hundred south right of way and was reviewed again. At the conclusion of that matter, the planning commission recommends city council approval of the proposed vacation plat that now is found in your packet. The zoning in the area is light industrial M-one zoning and the general plan guidance is special use district light industrial business park. The proposed vacation does not have any, uh, detrimental impacts to, to that, that designation for the general plan and or the zoning. You'll see ordinance number nine fifty-five in the packet, uh, the supporting documents thereafter. Commentary from staff is supportive of the requested vacation and there are no engineering concerns noted tied to the vacation plat. Um, you'll see the minutes and, um, applicable documentation regarding advertisement for the public hearing which we just held. And with that, I would defer to the city council if you have any questions for me and or the applicants who are here today, represented by Natalie Nichols.
Natalie, you want to come up to the mic and tell us anything about this? Explain what exactly is going on here?
Yes, okay, so, uh, I'm representing America First and we are very excited to get started on this project. Uh, this is for the corporate campus that I've come before you guys before on. With this project, we aren't going to be needing some of these public roads with our new campus design. So we're requesting that we vacate several of these. Um, and then we're going to be relocating Cozy Dell, which will now be called fifteen hundred west. With this design, um, we think that's going to be a great new, um, great new improvements, um, provide a lot more, um, public infrastructure that's updated. At this time, I do request that this be a conditional approval. On the condition that America First is currently working with the neighbors, the RCH, um, to get through some agreements on cross access, some other stuff. And so for their, uh, benefit, we're asking for a conditional approval based on that, um, once that agreement is put in place, finalized and signed, that is when we will be able to, uh, record these plats. So that's, that's what I'm asking for tonight. Do you have other questions on the vacation plat in general?
Is the conditional improvement just for the subdivision that you're asking for?
For the vacation plat.
For the vacation itself?
Because we're going to have to, we're going to have to record the vacation plat before our subdivision plat.
Can you do a conditional on a vacation?
We were told and led to believe that this was worked out because initially when we first came about and, and I told it, ma, I made it real clear, if we're going to do road vacations, you guys have to work this out because we're not getting stuck in the middle of this battle between two property owners. Because once we vacate that, it has to go half and half or they got to work it out somehow. So we were told just last week that this was worked out, so I'm a little bit surprised, I didn't know that it hadn't been, so. I, I would prefer not to do a conditional approval because we need to know that's done, because we don't want, we don't want to be in, in the middle of that, so.
Well, and we can't really unvacate, right?
And that's the problem, I mean, it would be kind of a weird thing there, so this needs to be resolved because we don't want to be in the middle of it, nor do we want to be trying to put pressure on somebody, so.
And we're close to getting things finalized, it's just, uh, we've got red lines back and forth, it's almost done, it's just didn't quite get signed before this, this meeting tonight. But it's, it's in progress, everyone's on board.
Council Stevens?
Okay, I was just, thank you for, for that caveat because I was going to ask the timeline, but can, can we table this? And so, um, because, yeah, this is.
I, I mean, I don't know that we have a whole lot of choices if this isn't resolved, that's really your only option at this point, just table it for the next meeting. We can have it done by then, hopefully, I'm assuming you could have it done in two weeks.
We'll, we'll see, that's not up to me.
Well, you said you were going to mow the lawns and take care of the lawns for the campus and you don't even work for America First.
I can do that, I can do that, there won't be grass, so I won't have any work to do.
Council Stevens?
The various property owners, okay, so you're talking, America First owns property, so is it the property owner to the north?
It's to the south.
South. Okay, all right.
So, yeah, there's just, um, working through some issues with, uh, access to properties and stuff, so that's just what's being worked on and agreed to.
So how, um, yeah, once this is all signed off on, how how quickly, I mean, do you need it done, approved immediately, or can it, I mean?
The the vacation plat?
Yeah.
Oh, we need it as as soon as possible, because we're, we've been holding up construction on this, and it's, uh, with construction costs, it's increasing every time we, every week that we aren't constructing, so we're hoping to get this agreement done as soon as possible, and then hopefully we can be back on in two weeks, so we can get this approved and and moving forward.
So, uh, just a point of procedure, would we have to have a new, uh, public hearing if something changes in it, or no, it's just on?
No, no, we're fine, we had it tonight, you just table it for your decision in two weeks, so we're fine on that.
So we would just need a motion to table, uh, okay, Council Arnold?
Motion to table ordinance nine fifty-five to be at a later date on the petitioner's request to, well, no, it's just tabled. You just come back, one table, and it's done.
And, uh, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion on the, uh, motion? All right, all in favor say yes?
Yes.
Yes.
That passes unanimously, we'll see you at a later date, thank you, Ms. Nichols.
I I worry this may may carry over into the next one, is is that going to be an issue with us on our item number two?
This is the subdivision?
Yeah. That's what I was thinking, so we're in the same boat on that one as well, because we can't really finalize that until we have that vacation done, so.
So we table this one, or just?
We would need a motion to table, well, or do we just remove it from the agenda? I guess.
I'd table it as well, and it keeps it on there, it's before you, and then you can deal with it in two weeks.
Okay, uh, Council Arnold?
Motion to table ordinance nine fifty-six as well.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Yeah, motion and a second, any discussion on that? All in favor say yes?
Yes.
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 Well, this meeting's going very quickly, suddenly.
Same old.
Yeah. All right. Sorry to, uh, those folks that came for America First tonight. Uh, item three, consideration of ordinance nine fifty-seven to approve a small subdivision amendment for the Riverdale Center five subdivision amended, property located approximately forty forty-five to forty-one thirteen South Riverdale Road, as requested by the CCA Cornwasser Group and AWA Engineering, Mr. Eggit.
Thank you, the representation tonight is Jake Tate, who's present, so if there's any questions following this, feel free to ask him, um, as noted, regional commercial C-three zone is the zoning for the site, uh, that came before the Planning Commission on May twenty-four, twenty twenty-two, wherein they reviewed and discussed the Riverdale Center five subdivision amended plat, at the conclusion of that discussion, it was recommended by the Planning Commission for City Council approval as a proposed small subdivision amendment. The ownership of the property is Bounty View LLC and Riverdale Center North LLC, um, and the general plan guidance is planned commercial high for this area, you'll see ordinance number nine fifty-seven with the noted, um, changes by Mr. Brooks, who I'm sure can restate those changes if that's desired by the council on behalf of Councilor Hanson, so she can hear what those are, and then, um, you'll see that the review comments from staff are all supporting of the request, the note from the city engineer is the improvement drawing boundaries need to match the plat description boundary, but he's comfortable with recommending approval of it with the understanding that that gets resolved, Mr. Tate, that needs to get resolved, and then you'll see the application fee and the actual plat documentation in the packet, and with that, I would defer to the council for conversation, comments or questions for either me or the applicant.
All right, are there any questions from the City Council?
Council?
Here's a question.
So this, this is, okay, I've been watching so many videos of planning commission, this, this is just cleaning up the lot line, as if I understand, this isn't has, doesn't have to do with the, uh?
The townhome project will be a site plan project that's separate from this.
It's separate, even though, even though that they've already done.
Even though lot one is being, obviously, you can see down in the lower corner, unit identification, that's a request from, uh, Weber County to better identify where lots are for emergency purposes, so that's a new feature you'll start to see on plats in the future, because they're concerned they can't find units in a lot of these apartment-type projects, so if you're wondering where that came from, that's a new feature you'll start to see on plats to better identify where these locations are when they don't have, uh, city streets, but but in any event, yes, this is just the plat, and then that site plan will come at a future date to the City Council once it proceeds out of Planning Commission, it's not there yet.
My question then, concerning the the lot line, language, uh, between, was it lot one and four, is that, or I can't remember, um, do both, oh, because it's two different owners there?
Bonnie View is, yeah, Bonnie View is one owner, a lot four, and then lot one, lot two, and lot three are Riverdale Center North LLC, correct?
Okay, so between the two owners, both owners are are in agreement on all of these?
If you look at the owner's dedication, it's got CCA Cornwasser and Bonnie View both listed, and I'll let Mr. Tate talk to further on that, I think.
Please.
Uh, Jake Tate, twenty ten North Redwood Road, Salt Lake City, Utah, uh, yeah, the Bonnie View would have to sign the plat as well in their agreement, and they've been, Cornwasser Group has been in discussions with them, they own the RC Willie site.
Right.
And, um, they would sign as owner of that as well.
Okay, so there's no surprises on the on their side?
No, no, we, it wouldn't record anyway without their signature, so they would have to approve and consent, and and Cornwasser's been working with them.
But they haven't consented.
Until they sign, I guess.
So we're, we're approving something that the owners haven't consented to, that's what this is doing today, is consent, or going with the City Council to approve something that an owner has not signed.
I I have not presented anything to the city that would indicate that they've approved it, no, I have not been asked to, nor presented that, however, it would not be recorded or become an official document without their signature on the plat.
Okay, Mr. Eggit, is this, is this normal protocol? A procedure?
I've, I've never seen issues with this situation in the past with having two shared signatures on a owner's dedication, we have seen this before, and it's been approved, and it it goes through fine clearly without their signatures, just like you said, the the Recorders Office would not record it, nor would our city engineer sign it, nor would any, uh, the Planning Commission Chair or the city sign it.
I thought we would be the last, uh, step in this process, but.
When you have a Mylar, the, when you have a Mylar, they won't sign it until the very end, prior to it going to the city Recorders Office for recordation, so you don't get the signature at this point anyway, until there's a Mylar that's printed off, but you can't get a Mylar printed off until they have the assurance that the approval has been given by the City Council, and that's in every city I've worked in, I've never seen it operate differently.
Our first job after your approval tonight is to get that Mylar printed and take it to the owners for signature, at which time then we present it back to the city for their signatures.
The, my entire career, that's how I've seen it done.
And in my entire career, we're the last signature on the official one, when we make the approval.
Right, the mayor does, he is the last signature on behalf of the City Council with the Mylar.
When it's voted on and we make the approval, there's already a signature.
No, normally, it's been, everybody signs it, it, the way that it works, in every, and until tonight, and the, unless things change, in every single city council meeting I've been in, the City Council will approve it, there's a Mylar that's printed off, the Mylar is signed and notarized, and then notary, it's brought into the city, city staff then takes that document to the city engineer, the city engineer reviews it for completeness, will sign it, then will take it to the city attorney, who reviews the legal documentation for completeness, they will sign it, then it goes to the Planning Commission Chair to verify that it was what was approved, they will sign it, and then the mayor is the final signature that verifies on behalf of the City Council that it's been signed correctly. At that point, then, it can be recorded with the city, with the Weber County, or in my previous life, Davis County Recorder's Office.
And so you're asking us to approve something that isn't complete or finalized?
Council Arnold?
So, why can't we bring America First and table them and do it, basically what we're doing is a conditional, because we do ordinance nine fifty-seven, we approve it, somebody says no, nine fifty-seven dies, I mean, it, there's no way to enforce it or anything like that, because they just don't record the plat with the county, so it doesn't change, so that's kind of irrelevant, I mean, they need our approval, but it's irrelevant, so why can't we vacate the roads and approve the, the America First stuff pending the, uh, owners agreeing on whatever, just like we're going to do this one and the the next one with Sean's approval, or, you know, staff's approval, I mean, we can, we can approve this stuff tonight, pending signatures, pending, uh, agreement from the owners, because then our piece is taken care of, pending a fulfillment of the other steps, right?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, most of the stuff we do are kind of like conditional approvals just for that reason, the only thing about a vacation that worries me a little bit is where it's our property, and it's us that's giving it up, and I just don't want to get stuck in a, because if they don't work it out, then we either leave it the way it is or we end up in a lawsuit over it, and that's what I don't want it to.
But if we, so, so what we've done in the past with various things is left it to you, um, not specifically you, but staff.
Right.
So if we approve those things, pending approval of this, it 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 doesn't, if if it doesn't, if that clause isn't enacted, then we, then the approval's off.
Right.
But it allows them to move forward and get their stuff done on all of these issues, right, I mean, we're not the holdup on anybody, because I think had, uh, Ms. Nichols? Natalie, if if she not asked for a conditional, it would have been done, right, it would have, it would have just gone through, but because she came forth with the information and said, you know, we don't have those signatures yet, to get it through us and say, yeah, we'll approve it, on the condition that they get those approvals, bring them to you, and that way they can do it during the week as opposed to every first and third Tuesday night.
And and I don't disagree with you, my concern was when we were told one thing last week, and then it, I find out tonight that it wasn't done, that's, that's cause for alarm for me at this point, because I don't want to get stuck in the middle of that thing.
We put a date on it, I mean, if it's not done by such and such a date in the motion, I mean, that'd change the.
On the America First one? I, what I'd prefer to do is deal with this one while you got this one in front of you, and then if you want to come back and and address that one, I'd prefer to do it that way.
If the owners don't sign, it's not going to move forward.
Right, this can't be recorded until this is signed, and that's why this is not, that's how we've always done them, and I don't think we lose a lot of sleepover for that reason, so it's not going to get signed by the rest of, so I'm not going to sign off on it, the mayor won't sign off on it, so this is still a ways down the road on this one here, and and we have done that before, that's not uncommon.
You're kicking this back and forth between, you're talking, um, nine fifty-seven, the?
Right.
Okay.
Right, and that doesn't involve us as a party, the other one does involve us as a party on the road vacation.
Yeah, I'm going back to your comment on signature, I just don't know how how that would function, that you would get an owner's dedication on a preliminary final drawing that hasn't been approved by the ownership group and get it notarized, that becomes a document that's part of the packet, and then go and redo it again with the Mylar, that just seems clunky and not anything I've ever standard witnessed that that's how it operates.
Mr. Eggit, hear me for about two minutes and explain the Mylar, Mylar process.
Mylar is a, well, it's the special, it's that Mylar document, right? Comes out on a large, a large film product, it's printed out, it's brought into city staff, this is, they're saying, everything is completed to the satisfaction of what was expected by the City Council and engineering, they're saying, we assure that this is a true and accurate document that's ready for recording, it then is brought in and reviewed by city staff, including the city engineer, the city engineers can go through with a really fine-tooth comb to make sure everything is right, if he, if he isn't complete, uh, completely comfortable with it, he will not sign off on it, he'll kick it back and say, you need to address this, and then they'll have to reprint a new Mylar, that has happened before, I've seen our city engineer block a Mylar, has to be fixed and brought back in to meet this, the city requirements, make sure everything that's required by the survey is correct and accurate, at that, at that point, then, like I said, he would sign off on, if he signs off on it, then from the engineering perspective, everything's good, and then it's going to be a legal review by Mr. Brooks to make sure all the legal, and then it continues on that, that way with the Plan Commission, and then the mayor to make sure, the mayor's a final stamp of approval on behalf of the City Council, so he's saying, yeah, everything looks good and in order.
If we vote this tonight.
Keep going, Council Stevens, yeah?
Tonight, it, it's just a formality that is, that is cemented, uh, the, the concrete's poured but not dry, and it is dried once the mayor signs it.
The, uh, recognize, again, verifying that he's recognizing your motion in support of it, it's reconstituting that when he signs it, that's the final stamp of approval that verifies the motion that was made to approve it, but there's a, an intermediary final review to make sure it's true and accurate, because obviously, once it's recorded, it's, it's a legal document, right? But even the county won't accept it without the mayor's signature on there, because it's representing the will of the council and approving it in the first place, so it's allowing us, without the approval of the council, we can't even get to the point of printing the Mylar, to go through the final, fine-tooth comb review to make sure it's accurate and correct, to have it signed by the mayor.
I'm, Ms. Mayor, I'm comfortable moving forward on this.
Council Hanson, do you have more questions, or, uh, I'd be interested in any comments you might have, actually, the, how you think it would be done differently?
So, if, I can tell you where I work currently, the final Mylar is brought to the commission at that meeting, and all the signatures and the, it's complete, finalized, everything's perfect, and that's when the legislative body reviews it and decides, are we good with this or not good with it, because why would we approve something that's not complete? We don't know if it's going to be complete, and we're not having that final sign off when it is complete, and so that Mylar is brought in at the end, and that's when the commission chair signs it.
Is it reviewed at a work session, is that when the, because you wouldn't look at it in this sense, right?
Well, it's reviewed by the Planning Commission prior, and then it's reviewed by all of the utilities, all of the people who are required to sign it, the legal department, all of, everybody, and then, um, once the planning director is satisfied that everybody has made all the changes that are necessary, then he prints the final and brings it in, everybody signs it, and then they have the commission vote and approve on it when it's completed, so it is a little different, and I think there are circumstances where you can't do it that way every single time, but to my point that I made to you in an email, I think there, we could maybe tighten it up a little bit.
One thing I would, I might suggest is that we, we review this under the code that's currently in place, and as Mike has pointed out, this is how we've done it for years and years, so i- if there is a need to refine the process, then we could probably do that, but I would pro, I would propose that we vote on it as it currently stands and the process as it currently stands.
We don't trust engineers, though, so.
Well, and I would counter and just say, I have not seen this process be broken and have issues ever in my entire career, and I'm putting my career on the line by saying that, and it frustrates me a little bit to have to say that, because I don't like to do this, but I've worked in West Mountainton City, Syracuse City, and now in Riverdale, and I've been here for ten years, and it's worked in every single jurisdiction and every single situation I've been in, and just fine without issues, and the developers take it very seriously, and we staff are very competent in how we review and sign it. So, no, I'm just saying, it's, it's, I hate to be in this position.
Back it down just a little, because I think we're okay.
Well, and I, I'm not saying that you're incompetent, I trust the staff, I'm saying that for us as a legislative body, you know, we need to make sure that we're approving stuff, that we know what the final outcome is.
I, I think when the mayor signs that, if he noted issues, he would bring it back to the council for that purpose, before he would sign it, that's what I was trying to say, is him being the ultimate check and balance, if he sees something and sniffs it out, he's going to tell you in a meeting, hey, something's wrong with this Mylar, if, and the staff were just, no, it's right, and he says it's wrong, we would bring it back to the council for that final review to appeal it, right?
I apologize if you, if you took that, if it was any kind of slight, I've worked for the city, for cities for over fifteen, seventeen years myself, I'm just saying that there's other ways of doing it, and I just have been having some concerns lately, if everyone wants to move forward, they can.
I, I don't mean to be so passionate, I just, I feel very passionately, this system works very well, it's very effective, and there's a lot of checks and balances along the way to get to the conclusion, and it's been working very well for the city, that's all I'm trying to communicate.
I do, I hope you know I do.
All right. Uh, Council Arnold?
I would move to approve ordinance nine fifty-seven, um, noting that all staff concerns need to be resolved in this process, but move through the City Council.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a second, uh, any discussion on that motion? Uh, since this is an ordinance, let's poll the council.
Council Merrill?
Yes.
Council Arnold?
Yes.
Council Hanson?
Yes.
Council Stevens?
Yes.
Council Hilton?
Yes.
All right, that passes unanimously, thank you, Mr. Tate. All right. All right.
Bring shirts tonight, yeah.
Okay. We will now move on to item number four, consideration, uh, question, quick question.
Just one point. I know, uh, Steve's looking through his Robert's Rules of Order.
That's exactly what I was doing there.
Are you pulling up the novel?
No, my concern was, cuz I, I'm anticipating, maybe go ahead and speak, so I'll see what, what you say.
Cuz you're pulling up Robert's Rules of Order, so with our, it was probably to look up the tabling.
Exactly, yep.
So.
Can you untable in the same meeting?
I, I think we can based upon that. It does say that you need to resolve your, your issue that you had. But if I'm anticipating Alan correctly saying that we made this a contingent approval based upon them resolving that, that would be the issue that you had, so.
And that's basically what she asked for is just, you know, if we make a motion that it's passed based on them working out with the owners. If it doesn't get worked out with the owners, it basically doesn't pass.
When, when I said that originally, that was me doing that, just because I didn't wanna bring that in until that was resolved. That wasn't anything that's set in stone or anything like that. As, as the city attorney, I'm just very uncomfortable with that because I want that resolved short of us getting involved in it. Just don't even wanna touch it. I've seen these before, and they can end up nasty, so that's why I wanted it resolved. And we were told it was, and, and then I was a little bit surprised tonight that it wasn't, so.
Uh, Jake Tate?
Would it be appropriate to speak on behalf of the neighbor? And is it, I don't know, cuz I can tell you that.
Yeah, I mean, he's involved in this, so I think he might give us some insight on this.
Have to untable?
Yeah, 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 what we'd have to do, I mean, assuming.
Untable that if we're gonna go back.
Yeah, we've gotta untable it and bring it back, so, for discussion. And so, cuz the council, the full council has to vote on that and make a decision if you even wanna untable it, so.
Okay, Councilor Arnold.
I would motion to untable. Let's see, we're talking ordinance nine fifty-five.
Do you wanna do them both or just one, just one? Let's just do them individually. Okay, we have a motion to, uh, untable ordinance nine fifty-five. Do we have a second? We have a second. Um, any discussion?
Yes.
Okay, Councilor Stevens?
This, this is an apples and oranges from, from what is being talked about with the, this, this, I, 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 this is not something that we wanna mess with. I mean, yeah, you can untable it, whatever, but then table it again, but to vote on it, to approve it conditionally? No, absolutely not.
Okay.
And so, um, let's just keep it, let sleeping dogs lie until, give it at least two weeks. There's no harm in waiting two weeks to see if this issue can be resolved. Don't, let's not untable it. It's a, it's a landmine.
Okay. Um, Councilor Arnold, comments?
I, I disagree because we meet two times a month. They're working on this every day and probably Saturdays to, to get this stuff done. Doing this conditionally or, or untabling it, that's the motion, to untable it, to talk about it, it leads us to where we need to possibly be, like Councilor Stevens said, to table it again. I mean, that's, we might end up doing that. We might pass it, either one. But, but we have to untable it to talk about it.
Good comments. Let's, uh, go ahead and poll the council on untabling this item.
Councilor Hilton?
Uh, yes.
Councilor Merrill?
Yes.
Councilor Hanson?
No.
Councilor Arnold?
Yes.
Councilor Stevens?
No.
All right. We have a split decision on that with, uh, the, uh, motion passing three to two to untable this item. So now we could probably hear, um, from Jake Tate just a little bit about, uh, the other property owner's side of this agreement.
Yeah, thank you. Jake Tate, twenty-ten North Redwood Road, Salt Lake City, Utah. Um, on, speaking on behalf of Riverdale Commercial Holdings, um, I, there, it's not acrimonious at all. There's no disagreement. It's just working through the fine points of the details. Um, we received the documents early this morning, and so we just hadn't have time to get through it. Uh, what we have got through is that I think the deal points are very close. It's just a matter of a few negotiable points, and I, I don't think we're far off. We just, because of the holiday and different schedules, we just weren't able to get it done before today's meeting. So definitely not acrimonious. I think we're really close and, yeah, just wanted to fill you in from the other side that.
We're worried.
We're on the same page. I think everybody's in the room, and it's not, we're not at loggerheads. It's, it's moving forward.
All right.
Thank you.
Well, thank you for your comments. Maybe AWA Engineering should, uh, consider letting someone else have a little bit of engineering business and, uh, maybe. You guys wouldn't be so busy. All right. Um, let's see, who wants to talk now? Maybe Mr. Eggit, Mr. Brooks, or does the council have some comments they'd like to make?
I was gonna say, I don't know that I have much more to add than what's already been said. I think at this point, it's a council decision on what, what position they wanna take relative to what Ms. Nichols requested.
Does she wanna say anything else? Uh, if we have comments, we'll, we'll call you up. Come on up, Mr. Willie, is that right?
Close.
Close.
Alex Nora, I'm on behalf of Riverdale Commercial, Riverdale Commercial Holdings. Like Jake Tate said, we got the documents this morning, um, haven't had a chance to work through them. Our attorney can't read that fast. So we are working through them. We believe we'll get there. From our perspective, however, we would prefer, just for the negotiation standpoint, to table the sub, table the discussion. Cuz we don't wanna be put in a position where the credit union says, well, it's approved, sign the document. You know, that's all that's waiting. We would rather be more on an even ground. Cuz it really puts us, frankly, it puts us in a better position of, over the credit union, and we don't wanna be in that position to where they're just waiting on us and everything else is done. We'd rather have us on the same page before it comes back to you guys, so you guys are confident we're on the same page.
Okay.
But I, I believe we'll get there. We're not, like Jake Tate said, we're.
Who, who are you with again?
The property owner. Sorry, I represent.
Are you with the engineering or the credit union?
Riverdale Commercial Holdings, so the property to the south. So when the vacation happens, the property's split between the credit union and us.
Mr. Heap and Mr. Willie's group, the, the one, the property's just south of the credit union, wherein this, this conversation is occurring for right-of-way access and, and vacation purposes. He's, he represents their group.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Sorry, there's a few of us that come to those meetings, so.
Too many alphabet soup letters and.
Just one second, Steve.
No, no, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Nope, okay. Uh, Councilor Hilton, you had a question, a comment?
Did I just hear both applicants on, on both sides of this issue ask for a delay, a tabling? Did we heard that request or?
No.
No, you're, you're the other.
Yep, this is from Riverdale Commercial Holdings asking for the delay. I think America First wants to move forward.
Asking for a delay, I think that we oughta give them a delay.
Yeah, only one is asking for a delay, just Riverdale Commercial Holdings. What is this?
I'm so confused. I, my understanding is you represent the property to the south of America First. Is that not true?
Correct. And he wants a delay.
And so did America First when they made their request.
No, they asked for conditional.
They wanted a conditional approval.
But, so, so the thing is, I personally, if, if you're not on board, I'm not on board. But they're in the room. America First is in the room. The engineering firm's in the room. We're in the room. So when you go negotiate tomorrow and you say, hey, we have the position because we don't have the approval, you're still the only one that is not giving the approval.
Right.
But you, that just means you're delaying it two weeks.
And we're, I, to be clear, we would be okay with that. We would be okay with a conditional approval. I just wanna make it clear that we, if the, if the agreement doesn't happen, we're not on board, so, you know.
So the conditional approval just gets it through us. You say no, there's no approval.
Right. As long as Mr. Brooks is okay with that, I'm okay with that.
But you have to be okay with it. But it, what it does is, so we, we, we get paid by the month. So they can call us and say, hey, come back tomorrow, which is fine. But if we say it's conditional, you're still, you still say no. It, it doesn't bind you to anything. You know, it just kinda, you've never heard my bear story, but I got stuck up in a city council one time in another city because they only meet twice a month. And they didn't wanna hear things other than when they're in the meeting. And when you're talking what you guys do, and even Ted's been here talking about getting this thing moving so he can, construction costs and things like that. I mean, he's been here several times talking about this. So I'm just trying, the reason I wanted to untable it is to get everybody moving. But you can still say no. I mean, uh, you, you say you wanna delay, I'll support you. If you say we'll do it conditionally and then you say no, I'll support you then too. Cuz you own the property. I don't own the property, so, I mean, you represent the people that own the property, whatever. But it's your, your call on, you say yes, conditional approval, I'm with you. If you say no, then I'll, I'll support the tabling. So unless anybody else has anything to say, what, what say you?
Any other questions?
Well, I, I, I don't, there's some merit to what is being said, but I'm, I'm, my personally is, 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 it was represented that it was going to be resolved. It's not, come back when it's resolved and, and we'll move forward when it's resolved. And so my, I, I won't do, I, I don't think a conditional is appropriate at this point.
Councilor Hanson?
And I would agree with that. I'm, I have the same concerns that Mr. Brooks does legally, that it's just a bad position to put the city in, and I've never heard of it being a conditional approval for a road vacation. Because what do you do? I mean, I get that it kinda follows along the same lines and maybe proves my point a little bit. But I, I, for those same reasons, I wouldn't vote for that.
Any other comments?
Is America First here?
Yes, Tim Snyderman and Kim Coleman are here.
I mean, what's, what's this?
I'm having a contract negotiation. I'm here at eleven oh-two S forty-two hundred South in Riverdale. I represent America First Credit Union. Um, it is our understanding that as long as we were working towards a negotiation and an agreement with the RCH, that we could bring it before the city council. We had hoped to have a signed agreement by tonight. Um, I don't know who you spoke to a week ago because it wasn't anyone at America First that said the agreement was done because we just got it back from RCH just within the last ten days. So we were working very hard to get our comments back to them in a timely matter. I had hoped that would have gone through Friday with the weekend. It did not go until this morning. So I do apologize to the council that that didn't go. We would love to be able to move forward as soon as we have a signed agreement. Um, obviously, this is costing us money, um, four million dollars since May when we first brought this to the city, uh, planning commission, those costs. So we would like to be able to act. Um, you know that our building, um, permit and our plan has already been approved by the council. But of course, we don't wanna put money into that until we know that the road vacation goes through. We wanna work with, um, RCH, and I think we are, I would agree that it's very close. I personally, on behalf of America First, would love the conditional approval. I recognize that that is strange and odd maybe to some of us. But if RCH says no or America First says no, then, then it's not gonna go anywhere. And I would hope that it would never get to an ugly status. Um, America First has been a longtime partner here in Riverdale and a good corporate citizen. I would hope that, um, that would say something towards this project and our word to work towards an agreement with RCH. And honestly, it will cost America First a lot of money if, if it doesn't go through, right? And so I wouldn't want to do anything that would, uh, put that in jeopardy either. So our position would be an approval. That would be fantastic, a conditional approval. If it doesn't, we'll be back here in two weeks and hope that our neighbor partner is willing to work through those final agreements, um, before then. Any questions I can answer?
Thank you, Ms. Joe.
Thank you.
All right, any other comments? Councilor Stevens?
Mr. Brooks? To do a special session of the council, what do you need? Two days, one day?
Um, yeah, we just gotta give, uh, twenty-four hour notice on it.
Okay, so if, if, if they come in and say, okay, we, we, both parties have signed it on Wednesday, we could, we could come in Thursday and approve that, in theory, in theory.
Yeah, as long as we have time, get public notice out, we're okay.
So twenty-four hours?
Right.
Uh, so one business day?
Right.
I'm willing to come in on a weekend.
Councilor Arnold?
I'm willing to come in on a weekend too, but we are not parties in this situation. We're approving something that they, we're, we're just basically giving them control to come up with an agreement, not rubber stamp their agreement once they have it. We can, we can approve this, put it in their hands. They have their agreement. They come in and tell you guys, we've got it. We're running, or you don't get it, you're not gonna, well, you're not gonna come in and say, well, we don't have it, right? So that's what the conditional is. I mean, just to say, okay, give us twenty-four hours to rubber stamp this is, is just crazy. This, this, this whole thing is crazy. I mean, this one's a pretty simple one. We do conditional approvals all the time. So, I mean, I, I'd say we just put it in their hands and let them rock and roll and get it done. Cuz if this meeting would've been tomorrow, maybe this would've been done. And, and hold your position, you know, don't say, if they say the city council said it, say, okay, that's, that's a big deal in my world. It's not really that big of a deal, you know? We, we have to get this through so you guys can make your decisions and get moving, is what I feel.
Councilor Stevens?
First off, there's no rubber stamp here. It's an approval. And so it's, it's, uh, in, 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 like it's been presented, the city has a vested interest in this. If it's, if this city is, is a neutral third party, that's one thing. City's not a neutral third party, has a vested interest. Therefore, it needs to be tabled and then brought back once the agreement has been signed.
Councilor Arnold?
I would make a motion to approve ordinance nine fifty-five as proposed in the packet with the condition that the two parties, or that the parties, all parties, including Riverdale City, agree to, um, the stipulations that were put forth. They have all agreement between all parties.
Mr. Brooks, does that work for you?
Uh, I, I guess if we're gonna do that, that's the one thing we gotta be really careful with is how we word that. So I'd like it a little bit more specific, um, as to exactly what we expect and what we've gotta have out of it, just to keep it. What I don't wanna do, or even give the impression that the city's agreeing to give up property, our property, to two parties without them working it out. So we, we are in a sense of party to this one, Alan, and that's what makes me more nervous about this one than another one. So I, I, I guess, just I wanna specific as to what you expect from them, what they're gonna agree to before this is finalized.
So what's in the packet, right, was the vacation of the roads based on, and their lot lines. But I also, in the motion, brought Riverdale City into it. So if they agree and you don't, then it's a no. If you agree and America First agrees and they don't, then it's a no. If one party of the three parties does not agree.
Doesn't agree, then it's a no.
Then it's a no from the council. But if all, if they come through, they say yes, they say yes, they come to you and say, we agree. You look at it, again, just like we're talking about with the.
Okay.
The subdivision that we were talking about. So, so that's why in the motion, I put us a party as an agreed, agreeing party.
Okay, just as an approval of the.
Right.
Process, okay. I could probably live with that.
Okay, we have a motion we feel comfortable with legally. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
We have a second from, uh, Councilor Hilton. Is there any discussion on the motion?
Could I see that all in writing before we vote on it, please?
Councilor Stevens would like to see it in writing.
I think that's an absolute, uh, justifiable request.
Well, I, I mean, all we have in writing is this one, and, and technically, we are supposed to have things in writing at a meeting, so. And, and this is a little bit, we, we, we deviated. It's not exactly how it was written up in the ordinance, so. There's, there's new terms to that. I mean, if you wanna take a, a break, I can run up and draft another one.
Absolutely. Let's take a break because I'm not comfortable moving forward, committing the city with the vagaries, what, what I hear are vagaries. So absolutely, I would, I'd like to see it in writing.
Procedural question, um, can he just vote no if he doesn't get to see it in writing or?
Yeah.
I mean.
So I'm be denied request to see it in writing?
Well, I don't know if you can hold the whole meeting up to see it in writing. I mean, if you're not comfortable with it, you can vote no on it. But is it legal that it must be seen in writing? Like, that's.
There's a statute that requires you to have things written up in advance. It, it's technically for the public's interest more than anything, so they have the chance to review that.
And see, I, I'm not comfortable with, with, you know, we get the packet, we get, we read it. And, and then when there's changes, addendums, whatever you wanna call it, that are brought in, and then there's these back and forths and this, this stuff going on, it's like. like, this gets really confusing, and I don't know how it's gonna look at the end, because it's already been voted on and it's like, it's moved on. It's like, it's out of our hands, we've lost control.
So it's not legal to vote on this motion then? Because it's, because it's a different one than's in the packet?
Well, I, I mean, I would use that same one, it's just that we would insert, you know, some per interlineation, some language that covers some of the things that Alan included in there. So it's technically still the same one. We have one that would come before it, but there will be some additions to it. We'd, I'd have to clarify that one.
In order to get it, oh, uh, sure.
Do I need to state my name again?
No.
Okay. Counselor Stevens, it's, America First will be fine if you want to table the discussion. I just wanted to express our opinion, but we don't want to create ill will here amongst the city council and waste any more time. We can come back in two weeks, or if you're open to a session sooner, that's completely fine, if that makes the council feel better. I just wanted my opinion noted, that I, I see as coming to an agreement and taking care of this, but I will support if you feel like a table is the best solution so that we can continue and proceed with the meeting.
Thank you.
From a legal standpoint, that's cleaner. We need to do it that way. That'd be my preference, so.
So we've had a motion and we've had a second. Is it not a legal motion, or, I mean?
You're gonna have to vote on that motion if you got a motion and a second, so.
Withdrawable?
Even though it's not in writing?
Once it's seconded, you gotta vote on it.
So, so the thing is, the, the, we live in Riverdale. We're laypeople. We, I'm a logistician. I do warehousing, transportation, things like that. I, I don't want to see the, the Mylar, because, I mean, I do have some training in that, but not enough to do anything. The, the thing is, this motion in writing, which Steve will redo to cover our butts, I don't want to hold you up. The city council should not be involved in this kind of stuff to this level. We, we need to look visionary, not the individual lines. And the thing is, it's like, we, we should not hold up you guys, or you guys, I mean, e- either side of this agreement, which we're a side now because of this. I, I'm just gonna say, don't be bullied, because this seems, I mean, let's go take a break. Let's go get a pizza, whatever. Let Steve, let Steve type, and two, two weeks from now isn't gonna change much. I mean, you guys are gonna look at the stuff and you're gonna come up to an agreement and you're gonna have to wait, or you're gonna have, we're gonna have to put out a notice. So I understand you're being kind, and you're not gonna get the city council, there's not gonna be any ill will with the, the city council. That's, that's kind of a silly comment, but the thing is, we, we want you to save money. I, I bank at America First. It drives me crazy seeing you waste money. So, so, I mean, I, I'm not gonna withdraw the motion. Uh, Steve, I guess he could withdraw the second, but I trust America First and their campus. I mean, this, this isn't like, you know, an addition to a house where we're gonna go into a setback or something like that. I mean, their campus is coming up and it's like, we're vacating roads and, and actually rededicating roads that's gonna come through. I mean, this, this isn't like changing the vision of our city to vacate these roads. I mean, this is, if, if Counselor Stevens wants to see it in writing, let's do it, because, I mean, you got your salt lake people here. We can't all go together, but you can go into Riverdale for a little bit, let him type it up.
Mr. Mayor, can I just call the question?
Yes.
Call the question.
Okay, we're gonna have a vote then. Yeah. Counselor Hilton?
Okay. Yeah, I would like to, Alan, in principle, I agree with what you're saying. I think the council's role in this is, is, we're getting down into the weeds. But on the other hand, I think Mr. Brooks has some legal concerns. I think that I understand those. And since both advocates are okay with the delay, then I might only draw my second.
Unfortunately, we've already had the call to question, so I think we have to vote on it.
We do.
So, um, no, we're done making comments. Ms. Marigoni, will you please poll the council?
Wouldn't know if we, if we vote it down, it goes off the, like, it has to re-go through all the application we've voted. If we vote no, it will be a no to the
Yeah.
to the, to the motion to the ordinance.
Yeah. Okay, now what, that was a
It's no longer tabled, it's gone.
It's still on the table, it's just that motion is gone.
The whole, the whole process isn't, it's
Yeah, yeah, it's, we're still discussing it, it just didn't pass.
Right. It's just that one particular thing is gone.
Can the call to question withdraw their call to question?
I don't think so, once that's made, if he's accepted that, which he started to vote for.
Yeah, yeah, let's go ahead and vote. Ms. Marigoni, will you please poll the council? Get these folks to make a decision.
Counselor Hanson? No. Counselor Merrill? No. Counselor Stevens?
No.
Counselor Arnold?
Yes.
Counselor Hilton?
No.
Okay. Motion does not pass, so we are now still discussing ordinance 955.
Can I make a motion on that?
Counselor Hanson? Motion?
I'd like to make a motion to table ordinance 955 to the next meeting, or leave it open to a special meeting if it's ready for us to vote before then.
Second. Are we okay to just table it? Would that be okay for you? Just say, just table it?
Yeah, that's what I mean.
Okay.
Till the next, whatever meeting.
Or just table it for now? I don't want to put a time frame on it.
Okay.
Then, then we can do whatever we want. Okay, and the second is okay with that? We have a second from Counselor Stevens. Is there any discussion on this motion?
Let me just reiterate. This has nothing to do, this isn't personal, it's other than to protect the interests of Riverdale, which is what I'm elected to do. And, and because the, what we dealt with before, Riverdale was a disinterested third party. In this case, Riverdale is an interested third party, and there's a big difference. And, and I'm, this needs to be resolved as a, as to protect the city, and that's why I'm, I'm moving the direction I am.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Ms. Marigoni, will you please poll the council?
Counselor Hilton?
This is a motion to table. Motion to table.
What was that?
Okay.
Counselor Arnold?
No.
Counselor Stevens?
Yes.
Counselor Merrill?
Yes.
Counselor Hanson?
Yes.
Okay. So that item is now tabled.
Again.
Again. And as inefficient and rough as this all seems, I do appreciate you all taking your responsibility seriously and not just blasting through this stuff so we can all get home and get back to our families and eat dinner. All right, so we are now going to move to item number four. Consideration to approve the final site plan for the Shake Shack Riverdale located approximately 4142 South Riverdale Road, as requested by Shake Shack and McNeil Engineering. Mr. Eggit?
Shake Shack tonight is represented by Ted Ditis, who's present in our, in our meeting. This is on the Old Farms Insurance Building Lot Site. We talked about it in the work session, so I won't belabor the discussion, other than to note, there was a conditional use permit element that came before the planning commission on April 26th and was approved due to it being in a C2 zone. The site plan itself came before the planning commission on August 9th, 2022, wherein it was discussed and recommended for favorable recommendation to city council approval, with the understanding to resolve outstanding staff and engineering concerns satisfactorily. General plan usage for the area set as planned commercial high. With that, you'll see staff comments and recommendations, well, I wouldn't say recommendations, but, but no concerns have been noted by, by planning, police, or fire. And then Mr. Douglas has noted that he's comfortable with this being reviewed for approval by the city council. He does have a few items of note that were discussed in the work session briefly and are in the packet. And if you have questions specifically for Mr. Ditis, he's here to answer any questions you may have associated with those comments. And then the city engineer has noted that on the plans, the north arrow is pointed in the wrong direction. It's kind of right now at a northwesterly position, so it just needs to be turned, the rose needs to be turned a little bit more. I'm sure that's a really easy fix for Mr. Ditis. And the application is therein, and then you'll see that Mr. Ditis has responded to the previous review, comments as part of this middle. And finally, you'll see the exterior colorations and materials for the site that was reviewed by the design review committee and approved by the design review committee. And with that, I will defer to the city council for discussion and questions that may come up. Thank you.
Okay. Any questions or comments from the city council? Counselor Arnold?
I have to approve the final site plan for Shake Shack Riverdale, as stated within the packet, with the considerations, with the considerations that Mr. Douglas has put, so staff concerns.
I knew what Alan was gonna say.
Okay. That's good. We have a motion and we have a second. Any discussion on this motion?
You mentioned a representative here. Is that
Mr. Ditis right there. Would you like him to come up, Counselor Stevens?
I would like to hear a little presentation on this, if you don't mind.
Sure.
Won't change my opinion much, but.
Excuse me. Ted Ditis, McNeil Engineering, 8610 Sandy Parkway.
You're not with Mr. Tate, not the same engineering group?
No.
Oh, wow. Okay, that's a switch. Okay.
That okay?
Yeah.
So, yeah, what you're seeing here is proposed Shake Shack Restaurant. There's two existing Shake Shack Restaurants right now in Utah. There's one in Murray at Fashion Place Mall, and there's one in Sandy at about 108 South State Street. This would be the first one in Utah that would have a drive-through. The other two did not have the drive-through. I think when the planning commission asked that question, the, or I'm sorry, the Shake Shack's explanation was COVID really changed their business model and their operating systems, and so they still have, I think, if you've seen the plans, a pretty sizable dining room and an outdoor patio as well, but they do feel strongly on the drive-through element of it as well. So I don't know if there's anything else I can tell you about the site or the project that's not on the plans, but I can try and answer any questions.
The only thing I might mention on this, and, and credit to both Shake Shack and the Ketruba's family, is we still would like to punch that road through in the back there, and they've been really good about working with this, so that's still an option, even though on this design, if you look in that very back parcel, there's still room to do that. So that's not off the table yet. So we still are hoping and, and we think we're gonna be able to pull this off. The other parties up above further are still in negotiations with us, so to their credit, they've been really good about that.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Mr. Ditis. We do have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on that motion? Seeing none, Ms. Marigoni, will you please poll the council?
Counselor Merrill?
Yes.
Counselor Hanson?
Yes.
Counselor Stevens?
Yes.
Hanson. Counselor Stevens?
Yes.
Counselor Arnold?
Yes.
Counselor Hilton?
Yes.
Well, that passes unanimously. Congratulations. As you can see, that's not really been the case tonight, so. Good, good job. All right. We'll move on to item number five. This is a discussion regarding water and drought rates, usage and status. Mr. Carden, why don't you come on up to the microphone for a minute? This is an item I asked to be put on there, as we discussed in the work session. I am just looking for a way to possibly give the residents a little bit of a break. I know they're suffering financially. I, it appeared to me that maybe we were collecting more than we needed to, although I'm not an expert on how much we need for the water fund, but I just know, I was surprised at the amount we collected for the July rates. And I wanted to see if that's gonna continue. We may be able to end those drought rates earlier than expected, if the water fund is making the appropriate amount. Mr. Carden, can you share just a few thoughts about that?
So we've looked at it briefly. Mr. Douglas was out of town and just recently got back today, and so we don't want to bring anything to you before we had an opportunity to go over it with him. We do have some stuff that we've put together and we've looked at it preliminarily. I don't know that we've collected, kind of as Mr. Brooks alluded to, I don't know that we're collecting an exorbitant amount, but we'll have, we can put together a report and show you the information we've looked at at the next meeting.
So what I'm requesting for the next meeting is to show kind of how much we collect in a normal summer and how much we've collected this summer, you know, with those extra rates in place. And I guess even if we could take it away one month early, that'd be better than nothing. But, you know, the goal is to collect the right amount, not any less or not anymore. So that was why we asked for that. Just, yeah, so any, any thoughts, or Counselor Hanson?
Yeah, and I, I think we've all heard a lot of feedback from the residents and maybe from looking at our own bills, but maybe it had the wrong impact, the wrong message than we, what we were hoping for. So I was kind of thinking about it too, having kind of dealt with the base rates and the tiered before. Maybe if we find a way where if someone's within the drought rate, the drought amount of usage, that then they're not charged the drought rate, which would be tricky with the system.
So the problem is, is like, yes, if we go spend a ton of money on like billing software, we could do something like that, but with what we, the constraints we have, that's not really possible unless you just say, okay, this tier doesn't have a drought rate, and then everything above this does. So we could do something like that. It's kind of, but we don't have the sophistication to say like
Trigger it maybe by usage, anything, is that what you just said? Anything over this amount, we
Right, but it'd have to be the same for everybody. Like, Weber Basin has an awesome system, and they do it based upon lot size and, and things like that. Like, we just don't have that level of complexity and ability to do those things.
I'm gonna have that discussion, and if there's a way, maybe, I mean, you guys would know better, the best approach, but I think a lot of the residents feel like they're being punished for actually helping, and I can see why they feel that way. And, and I know we have a healthy water savings amount fund, and so I'll leave that to you for the next meeting, but that's kind of my thoughts. If we can find a way to not punish those that are, you know, under 20,000 or whatever we think that year should be the top amount when people are conserving, and maybe kind of find a way to trigger it for the people that are overusing during those times.
And we can look at, I mean, we can obviously look at whatever you want. It's just hard to do something that's super like, I mean, I think that'd be awesome if we could do a similar thing to Weber Basin, and you could log in and see your media readings daily, because that's what Weber Basin allows you to do. And so then you could see like, I've got 1,000 gallons left for the rest of the, the month, so yeah, I better not water. But we just don't quite have that same sophistication. But yeah, we can bring some numbers to you, show you where we're at. I would say we even need to look at expenditure wise and, and compare those, because if you remember why we proposed a 40% increase, is because Weber Basin was going up 40%, and so we can bring all that information and kind of show you where we're at, and then you can decide what you want to do.
And some ideas, if you have any?
Yeah, and the ideas, like honestly, from my perspective and from looking at preliminarily, I think it's worked, and we're almost like right on where we should be money-wise. And we've had a lot of people who, who have called in and they've had like major leaks and stuff, and before they're like, I'm not fixing them, and now they've went and fixed them. So in a lot of ways, it's worked, but then it's punished a lot of people who were doing what they should have too. So I don't, we can play with it, but it's just kind of a guessing game, because we really didn't know what it would do. And so we can bring in a few ideas, but I don't know that we'll really know until we try a few things and see what works and what doesn't, so.
And I, I had asked if maybe we could not put the drought rates on the first 10,000 year our base rate, which is supposed to be kind of for your indoor water, but the city brought up the point that, well, that's the only guaranteed money we get. But the city brought up the point that, well, that's the only guaranteed money we get. It's the only one they can really plan on, cause, cause everybody pays that, you know, and. But I'm still not sure we're in favor of that. And the numbers you're gonna put together will be very helpful for us next year if we decide to maybe do a reduced drought rate. Maybe, maybe fifty percent was too high. Maybe it needs to be a ten, twenty, thirty or something instead of a.
I even think the increased base rate does make sense, even if we're helping the people who are conserving and maybe that's lesser. I think everyone did expect to pay a little bit more. So like the base rate, maybe that part still did make sense.
And like, that is something we could look at. Like maybe what we do is we just make our normal base rate higher so that we cover more. And so we're not so concerned about gaining ground on these summer sales on the big user, users. And then we really could do something more like that. We could make it more aggressive for the people who are really like overusing, if you will. But it would take some change to the, to our philosophies and things like that. And that's great.
Thanks for being willing to work with us.
We can look at whatever you want.
I, I think we definitely need to look at this because we, we need to determine what kind of city we want.
Right.
So as, as everybody goes home, um, or through the week or whatever, just go to the Chili's Speedway corner. Um, Speedway has just shut their water off. They, their, their grass is dead, their trees are dead. The, I mean, it's, it's probably the only stop sign or stop light in Riverdale that actually has like a Riverdale. Welcome to Riverdale, the Deadest City, you know, on the Wasatch Front or something like that. You know, we, we need to determine what kind of city we want. Cause if we're saying, hey, we're, we're protecting our water revenue, got it. But we need to balance that with, you know what, you guys need to water your lawn or, or dig it up and put rocks in or something because like, and I'm, I'm just, there's others. And everybody's seen the neighborhoods and some, some people, yes, some people no, but Speedway's a good one to look at, cause they just flat shut it off. And you know, they don't, we, we mandate, what is it? Eleven percent? Mike, is it eleven percent or twenty percent? But you can have eleven percent can be stamped or. Oh, it was twenty percent. We went to fifteen.
It's twenty percent, but now they, they can't have any more than fifteen percent, uh, grass and eighty-five percent everything else is what it is now. Yeah.
So I mean, we, we need to come up with what we're doing with this city because this restricting water, high price for water, all this kind of stuff, and rewarding people for just making the city look terrible. We gotta, we gotta balance that out somehow.
And it's really hard too, cause like that's one example. We have another example, like of a commercial user who's used over a million gallons this month, and normally it's way less. So our utility clerk called them and was like, what's going on? And they're like, well, our landscaper said our trees were dying, so we're watering every day. And so like, it's hard to choose one person and say, yeah, we want to fix these people's behavior, cause for everyone, there's the opposite. But you're right.
Million gallons. I mean, we, we want to incentivize them to put in rock or.
Right.
Something like that. That's, that's the.
That's the balancing act. It's really tough. And so what we'll probably have to do is kind of try stuff, kind of like we do with the drought rate. Yeah, and I don't, yeah, you know, like some of that gets all really expensive. And you know, like Sean's the expert on that. He's gonna have to talk to that. But like, do we gain enough from that expense? I, I don't know. Would have to ask Sean and.
Charge drought rates?
Yeah, yeah. You know, and like that's something you could look at. Like we can make the commercial rates a lot more expensive. You know, like there's stuff we can do. There's some stuff like, if you remember mobile home parks, they're protected by state code, so there's not, we gotta be careful with those, but at a commercial, we can do more. So yeah, we can look at it, but it's kind of gonna be a, let's try this, see if it works. Okay, let's tweak it. Let's do this. It's probably gonna be kind of a process, which is great. It's, I just don't think we're gonna probably get there in one step, but we'll bring you some information, show you where we're at, and then you can decide what you want to do. So.
I will tell you that with Shake Shack, I think it was Shake Shack that was, he, when we went through the design review and talked about the landscaping, he was thrilled with the zerscaping. He was like, oh, you guys are so refreshing that you'll just do. And if you've been along the front of Raising Canes and those, they, they tore out all the grass and moedas and everywhere. It looks great. It really looks nice. And it's just rock and plants. I mean, you know what I mean? So, so there's options and it, it can look really nice. And he was thrilled that he didn't have to put in a bunch of grass. He said, other cities, grass, 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 and you guys are just, yeah, throw a bunch of zerscaping and we're good. So.
And it is, in some ways it's less complicated. In some ways it's more complicated where we don't have secondary for the whole city, cause we've got a few people up here that do. And then we've got everybody else that doesn't. And so trying to find the right balance that way too is a little challenging for sure. So.
I just, I wanted to say since the mayor asked us to put this on, we honestly haven't had a chance to meet with Mr. Douglas, so it's just been Cody and I talking. He did come back today from his deer hunt and we had a flood ironically. So he was very preoccupied today. We just didn't want to lay this on top of him, but we'll meet with him tomorrow or the next day and kind of get some feedback from him. So it's just been us at this point winging it, but we lost this whole back entryway back here in, uh, just a sprinkler line, a big sprinkler line. Started flooding about two o'clock this morning. We lost some very valuable stuff in there, didn't we, Cody?
Oh, um, no.
This is inside. This was all my junk store over there. They've been wanting to get rid of that for a while. I think Cody did it on purpose. So it's all getting dried out in the hallway right now. So I don't know what I've lost yet. I'll look at that tomorrow too. So.
But we'll bring you some information and you guys can decide and tell us what else we need to bring you. So.
Just a little perspective and context. They figured that the, the drought rates were, would amount to about forty dollars a month. The, the fifty percent would be about forty dollars a month. And I thought, well, if we could cut off September and October, that's eighty bucks. That pays for a big chunk of the tax increase, really. I mean, it's five months of the tax increase that we just put on the people, you know, and, and whatever we can do to help them. That's, that's how I feel. So if we, if we can't do it, we can't. But if we can, I want to make sure we look at it, see if we can.
And the other thing we can do is a lot of entities, like I live in Far West on Bonavista, did drought rates this year, and like nobody had done them before. We were Basins done them before. So hopefully like we can kind of reach out to some of these other entities too and say like, okay, what did you do? Did it work? What did you do? Did it work? And, and kind of get a more harmonious outcome, if you will, cause more people have experienced now than they did. So.
Thank you, Mr. Carden. We appreciate that. All right. The next discussion is regarding the senior fees at the community center. Counselor Hanson asked for this to be put on the agenda with a, a second from Counselor Hilton. Uh, do you want to kind of start us off with a discussion, Counselor Hanson?
Yeah, it's kind of along all those same lines. Um, you know, we were, we were kind of focused on truth and taxation at the last time we met and, and I didn't put a lot of thought into it when we passed the updated fee schedule. Um, but I've had some residents reach out to me that this was such a great service that they used to be able to just go and exercise the seniors. And, and now they can't. They have to pay, which it's a nominal amount, which is what makes me feel like it's a nominal amount for the city too. And so I don't feel like we need to worry about other cities' residents. And so, um, if we have a senior rate, or I don't, I don't even think we need a senior rate for other residents that are outside of our city. Um, but I was just thinking internally, I mean, a dollar a visitor, I think it's five dollars a month was the new change. I don't know if, if that's worth it based off of everything we've been talking about, the hits that we've put on them. And, and this is a service, like we need to look at our community and what kind of community do we want? And, and that's kind of what I was thinking, if that makes sense.
Mr. Taylor, do you want to come up for just a second? I, I, I hope you're not too on the spot with this, but I, and I remember a number of twelve thousand dollars was, was something with the, with the fees, but it may not have been just the seniors.
Yeah, that was inclusive of all of the different fee changes.
Yeah.
Um, so that, we had about, and I'm going off a calendar year, twenty twenty-one, we had about sixteen hundred resident senior visits. And about twenty-five hundred non-resident senior visits, um, for, for, for the twenty twenty-one calendar year. So.
Do you define the senior?
We define it as fifty-five and older. Now, one, one thing as well, Counselor Hanson, and I, I appreciate those comments. I have not heard those complaints from seniors. I've talked to several and, and they haven't had the issue. Um, but the senior center has an exercise room and it remains free. And, and we definitely want to encourage, um, people to, to utilize that, cause that's a great resource. And with it comes a lot of other resources at the senior center with the senior programs and, and a lot of other things that way. Um, and, and there is no fee on that. Um, so, so there's that to consider as well, but whatever you guys want to do.
Counselor Stevens?
We have after-school programs. Is there a fee for those?
Yes.
So why are we, if we're gonna do that for seniors who are citizens, then we need to do that for the, all, everybody, the after-school kids? I mean, it, it's, it to be consistent. I mean, it's to bet, um, it is nominal. Um, anyway, I, I just can't, I've, I've had some pushback comments, so I've heard some of the things. And it changes hard and changes, but it, if you're gonna be consistent, if you're gonna eliminate it, eliminate for after-school programs. But you know what? You, that's not real viable. You, you need that. There's a couple of reasons why you do a nominal fee. Is it, it entices a level of commitment. If you're gonna pay for something, you're gonna be there. You're gonna show up. You're gonna participate. And the, the, the daily rate, if you come in, just, you know, now I go over there, I use the facility at the community center and you see me. Um, I see what's going on. I see the people patronizing the, and, and you know what? A lot of them are not Riverdale residents. And yes, they, that, this, what we're talking about doesn't apply to them. I get it. But if you're gonna do one, you're gonna do it all, or I, I can't believe that we've, haven't charged seniors up until now. I mean, we've charged the youth and the after-school programs. But anyway, that's, I'm done.
Counselor Hanson?
Well, in my response to that would be, there's extra costs associated with the after-school programs. There's not, aside from the fact that we have the equipment in the building, which is just overhead. There's no cost for this seniors to come and use the exercise equipment. And I think that if we do start charging non-resident seniors, it more than, it sounds like it would more than make up for the few seniors that go. And I do like what you said about the senior center rec room or the exercise room. And maybe we could put some more information out so that people know that that's an option that are seniors too. But, but yeah.
You know, and, and as far as the direct costs associated with servicing the seniors, most of what we see is pickleball visits. That's most of what we see from seniors. We have a, a few that, that exercise in the exercise room, um, really regularly. Um, but we have a large number of pickleball players, both resident and non-resident. Um, and there are direct costs associated with, um, providing nets for pickleball and, and providing those services that way. Um, but, but like I said, whatever you guys want. I mean, we have a lot of non-resident seniors as well, so.
Counselor Stevens?
Okay, can I just ask you, you just said the exercise room for seniors. Is that exclusive? Because I'm over there a lot. And the pickleball is, and especially in the very, in the heat, and when it gets cold, it is, and those seniors are vicious playing that game. And I mean, they're very, I, phew, but I'm being a little facetious, but the point of it is, is there is a lot of patronage for the facilities, the restrooms, whatever. So when you said usage of the exercise room, are you expli, are you specific or are you just the community center?
No, I was, I was thinking specifically just the exercise room.
Because that's, that's.
I understand the pickleball. That, that's a good point.
Because the participation in the exercise room, I'm, I'm practically in there by myself and I go there two to three to four times a week.
And that's the only feedback I've gotten was the people using the exercise room. And yeah.
And, and those, and those people, there's some early morning people and they're regular and I'm on first name basis with them. And anyway.
Yeah.
Because, and that, that number is very small.
And that's what I hope. Yeah.
But the, but whereas the pickleball is very, it's voluminous. It's, that participation, and that's good. That's good. And there needs to be a fee in there.
Rich, uh, Mr. Taylor, are there hours on the senior center exercise room?
Yeah, the senior center exercise, exercise room is available during senior center operating hours, which is shorter than the community center hours.
Probably not six AM, huh?
No, it's eight AM to three-thirty PM, Monday through Friday, whereas the community center opens up earlier at six AM, stays open later to nine PM, and we are open on Saturdays as well. So you get quite a few more hours over at the community center.
And I was just curious. I'm not trying to guide this anywhere, but I just, I used to go in the mornings too, and with Counselor Stevens and I, it made two of us in there. No, there are some other seniors that use it.
Yeah, for sure. There, we have some really loyal users.
Yeah, royal.
And I'm not familiar with pickleball stuff. That's a good point. Yeah, I was just talking about the exercise room.
When you guys are on the council, you guys go there together? Steve, what are they doing?
Um, we do offer a five dollar monthly pass for a senior.
Yeah, that was in the fee schedule. That was not, um, there weren't any fees for seniors. So.
Before, before.
Yes. So in the fee schedule that was approved, um, there was a one dollar daily user fee for resident seniors or a five dollar monthly pass for resident seniors. And then a two dollar daily fee for non-resident seniors and a ten dollar a month pass. So those four fees that affect seniors were new fees that were approved with the budget and then again with the, uh, fee schedule.
No yearly pass on this, on the community?
Yes, I'm sorry. There's a fifty dollar a year for resident seniors and a hundred dollar a year for non-resident seniors as well. Yep.
Counselor Stevens?
And this is, I, Mike, employees to include council members, their families and, and commissioners and families are free. Is that, is that?
I don't know who commissioners are. Who are commissioners? Yes, yes.
Their, and families are free. And so, um, now how many people, I, I think we were there as council members, but, um, I don't know what the usage is.
I didn't come with employee numbers. I can poll them, but I didn't come with them tonight.
Okay, we used to sign in. Now I just wave and say hi.
We record it.
Do you? Okay, thank you.
Counsel, and it is family members that live in Riverdale. Uh, my daughter found out, uh, much, much to her frustration, uh, that she does not get to use it for free anymore.
You know what? If, if we were to vacate that for employees, I have no problem paying the five bucks a month because I, I use it. I love it. It's close. And the fact that you added the free weights, killer.
Any other discussion on this? Is it something we want to look at changing or?
And so, yeah, that's what I, that's all I was asking for. If the council had an interest in it would be to maybe revisit that with an action item or if it has to go on a budget hearing, just to remove that fee for the recs, for the exercise room.
We can do it the same way. It'd be a fee schedule amendment is what we would do if you choose to go that route. We just put it on for discussion tonight, cause I didn't know if there was more than just one person interested. So that's all we did.
And so it would take two council members to put that on, or we could do it to, I mean, we could talk about putting that on.
Right.
A future agenda.
Well, I just add, you have also, pickleball's become so big that they've actually reserved nighttime, which used to be open play for basketball. Now, once we get into basketball season and the weather turns cold, there, there's a lot of participation in basketball. But right now, half the gym is pickleball and the other one is open court. And so that's how much interest there is in pickleball. It's, it's crazy. I mean, I, for somebody whose knees are shot and they can't do it, I'm, I'm, I'm impressed.
All right. So are, are we looking to put this on an agenda or do you guys want to just discuss it amongst yourselves outside of the meeting or?
You know, it's funny how none of this stuff applies. Bart keeps referring to they and them as those seniors, but he's one of them, as if he's not. So. I'm one of them. I found that out tonight, Rich. You ruined my whole night. So.
Do we need to increase the age a little bit from fifty-five? Like, geez, I'm almost one of them. Like.
You know.
Whatever you guys want to do.
Sixty-two.
Always something. All right. Thank you, Mr. Taylor.
Yep.
Yep. Okay.
So barring some direction, I won't do anything. So we need to, if, if two of you decide to do it and put it on as an action item, we'll do it, but otherwise I won't do anything.
I'd like to. I think it's just nominal and it's kind of a goodwill gesture.
Okay. Um, she would like to. Would anybody else like to see it on a future agenda?
Just for the exerciser? Yeah.
Well, no, the exercise room's free.
No, that's at the senior center.
The senior center.
Community center's not free.
I don't know if I'd be able to differentiate between pickleball and exercise room. What's her in the building? They're in the building.
Community center's not free now.
You can go ping pong and go to the. Air hockey, whatever.
They don't like sign in, I'm going to the exercise room.
They could say that, but once they walk through the gym, I mean, are you gonna go out there and take the paddle out of their hands?
I mean, during basketball season.
We just don't have staff for that.
People will come in to watch the kids play games and somebody's in there and the exercise room, but they came in on the pretext of watching their kid play.
Okay, anybody else want to put that on a future agenda to?
Chief, you want to take care of that?
Okay, apparently for now, um, it's gonna, we're gonna leave it as is. So, good discussion. All right. Let's move on to comments from the city council. Any comments? Any comments from the city staff?
Oh, I'm sorry. I had a comment.
Oh, okay. We're going back. Counselor Hanson?
Um, I just wanted to publicly say I meant no ill will to Mike. I one hundred percent respect you and your experience and, and it's okay that we have had different experiences. Um, and it really wasn't all, my comment wasn't really all focused on the Platts from what I was trying to share. So I was just trying to share that for me as an elected official, I've had some, some doubts about if we're voting on things that aren't finalized in front of us. Like it's been brought up a few times in different ways on different action items, different documents. And I just thought it would be good for us just to consider, you know, are, is there something that we need to do different or that we could do a little bit better to make sure when we're voting, it's on, on what the final outcome is, on what we want it to be, that it's complete. And so that was the only comment. I one hundred percent respect your position and passion. I appreciate your, I appreciate it actually. So, um.
I'm in the low nineties, so. I'm in the low nineties, so.
But that that was just something I wanted to bring up with the council in a public meeting is maybe that's something that we should we should think about a little bit more and and maybe look to see if there's ways where we can improve on that side of things. And that's really all I wanted to share on that.
Okay. I think Counselor Stevens is gonna hold us to having those ordinances a hundred percent, so we're gonna have to make sure they're they're right before we get them in here to vote on them. Um, anything from the city staff?
You know, maybe I just follow up on that. One of the things, Annie, that, uh, as I've sat in this position for the few months that I've been here, I'm surprised at how many, uh, developers come in and they're surprised at how well Riverdale works with them. Now, outside of America First and Ted Heap, that happen to both be sitting here tonight, we move these things along really well. And part of the reason why we do that is because you guys trust us. And so we do these things. We do bring stuff in that's still kind of contingent. But we have never, never wavered on that. If if it if it's what we know has to be done, it gets done. Or we don't go forward and we just put the ball in their court to bring it back to you to appeal because we won't, we won't do that. So I think you can rest assured that we follow through on these things. We really do. And to Mike's credit, he does a phenomenal job and even following through on on one of the comments that Brayden made earlier today, when we had that suspect out last week. I don't know how many of you followed that, but I happened to be over there both of those days and I watched that firsthand. And again, to their credit, um, that that was all over the news when they were looking for this guy. And, uh, you know, who caught him was our guys. And it was nothing but good police work. I mean, phenomenal police work, to be honest with you. So hats off to our employees and our staff. They do do a good job and they do their jobs well, so.
I agree.
And I just had a couple of quick comments. Uh, I was contacted today by the newspaper. Uh, apparently the, uh, residents in the Leslie Small Home Park received their notices today that they have nine months to get out. And, uh, so the newspaper wanted some comments about that, so.
So if we get contacted, which we did last time, we don't talk?
No, refer them to me. Yeah, I think some of them started going out last week. I got a notice from Chris Hatch. Those were going out, so. And there were some discussions back and forth. He's still got a number of squatters over there. Uh, squatters don't obtain a legal right to stay. And I explained that to him, you know, that's a trespasser. We can get taking, get that taken care of right now and get them out because that's not they're not entitled to live on somebody's land for free. That's not how it works, so. Uh, we may be over there making a couple of trips, trying to get some of those cleaned out because apparently they're all moving in. There's a number of them that are are just squatters. They're not even tenants, so they don't have a legal right to stay there. But that thing's getting to be even a bigger mess. It's just gone crazy. But so if you get questions or comments and stuff, just direct them my way on now.
And then the last thing, uh, there is a possibility that I won't be here next meeting on the twentieth. Are you gonna be around? I I think I will. I most likely will be here, but, uh, you may have to run it as a mayor pro temp, so I appreciate that. All right, not seeing nothing else, uh, we would need a motion to adjourn this meeting. Have a motion. We have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
All right, we're adjourned. Okay.
Mr. Carden, are you gonna stay for the next meeting? Thank you.
Okay, well, let's go ahead and get started with our RDA meeting, so, um, we'll go ahead and get started. We'd like to welcome you all to our, uh, Riverdale City RDA Board Meeting for Tuesday, September sixth, twenty twenty two. Let the record show that all board members are present with Board Member Hilton joining via WebEx. We also have members of the city staff as well as members of the public here with us tonight. First, we have a time for public comment. Seeing none, we'll move on to presentations, reports, which we have none. We'll now move on to consent items. Consideration to approve the minutes from the July nineteenth, twenty twenty two RDA Board Meeting. Is there any corrections or changes to those minutes? Seeing none, we need a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve the minutes from the RDA Board Meeting.
Okay, we have a motion from Counselor Hanson and a second from Counselor Arnold.
I want to turn, Alan.
You have a turn. You just gotta jump on it just like that.
She raised her hand and made eye contact. Okay, that's very good. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Hey. That passes unanimously. We will now move on to the action items. Number one. Consideration of Resolution R twenty twenty two dash zero four authorize execution of an amended participation agreement between the redevelopment agency of Riverdale City and Riverdale Commercial Holdings LLC as requested by Riverdale Commercial Holdings LLC. Mr. Brooks?
Yeah, I'll start it off just quickly here. Um, if this looks familiar to you, it's because you've already seen it just a couple of months ago. Um, we we thought we had this finalized and then, uh, once the, uh, the uh, parties in this agreement got a better look at it, there were a couple of things that were concerns to them. We changed a couple of little wording things and just cleaned some stuff up in some of the earlier language. There's really only two big changes and they're in two point one point one and two point one point three. And in essence, basically what it is is just, uh, when when we tried to push those negotiations along earlier, we came in and said, look, we will pay you a cap in this amount, just trying to get that going. Because we were kind of as a stall, a stall and a stalemate there. And so we had initially agreed to that cap. Since that time, and one of the other problems we had is we weren't getting a lot of feedback from, uh, Rocky Mountain Power. And so we weren't sure what numbers we were dealing with. Since that time, those numbers have come in. And they pre- wanted to to change that language a little bit in, instead of just going with that cap, going with that actual cost. It's the RCH group. This is that same party to the south of America, America First. So they wanted to insert language that dealt with actual costs for those, the movement of those utilities and the power lines and all that kind of stuff, which we were fine with. That doesn't affect us because that's what that money's there for as far as the RDA funds go. So instead of having that ca- cap and a number we were guessing at, now we dropped it back to actual language on that. So in a way, it's probably good for both parties because that's what it was intended for anyway. So that one, we didn't have any major issues with. Um, the second thing was a little bit different, and maybe Cody can explain this a little bit better, was just the the payback in in how we paid them back. Do you want to address that one, Cody? And that one's in the the two point, uh, one point three.
Let me correct Steve a little bit on that cap. So that cap wasn't facetious or just made up.
Right.
We added up everything. We said, okay, we're not paying you more than this. And that includes plus or minus twenty percent to Rocky Mountain Power, and that's the not to exceed amount cap. So they came back and said, hey, we don't think Rocky Mountain Power will really do it for plus or minus twenty percent. We think they're gonna charge us more, so this cap isn't gonna work. And so we said, fine, we will pay actual on Rocky Mountain Power up to whatever it costs. But you have to do these things, and that's why that exhibits in there. So that's why the cap needed to come out. The other change we made is we set it up, we negotiated what was best for the city and the RDA. So how it was set up is anything that, any increment that was generated by their parcel, they got a hundred percent of. Any increment generated by the rest of the RDA, which includes like Larry H Miller and Maverick and and Bravo, we got a hundred percent of as the RDA until we were paid back for, remember, we've spent money buying parcels of property up there and attorney's fees and and all sorts of things. And so that was that, there was like a one point nine million dollar figure in there. And so we wanted to be paid back before we gave that money to them because we've incurred costs before them, but they came back and they said, that's not gonna work. Financing's too tight. So what if you gave us fifty percent of the increment on the other property? And then you keep fifty and you pull that number down. So what we agreed to is fifty percent of the increment from the other parcels will go to the RDA and fifty percent will go to them as the increment is generated until the RDA is paid back for all the expenses that we identified. And that's the number that's in there. And I believe it's like one point, just under one point two million now. And the amount that that was reduced by the one point nine to the one point two was the appraised value of that property up there that originally RCH wanted the the RDA pulled out of the agreement.
Cody, plus the seven percent interest rate, right?
Right, plus the seven percent because we're in effect paying interest to the other funds that we in our fund borrowed that money from. So that's the main changes. So in effect, to recap, the, we'll pay whatever Rocky Mountain Power is, and so that's why the cap went away. And then the RDA will get their money a little bit slower because they're gonna get their money a little bit faster. So their financing term over that period of time is shorter. Because in effect, they will have to write like a three million dollar check to Rocky Mountain Power or whatever it ends up being upfront to pay for those improvements. So it'll just help cover their financing costs quicker is basically what the changes in the agreement will do. So I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. They did update some of the, um, addendums or attachments, whatever they're called. Um, like, for example, because of the negotiations with America First, before this had buildings, they pulled the buildings because they don't know exactly what it's gonna look like. Once they finalize it, it doesn't change anything. Just rather than put something in there that may not actually be, they gave it more of a general layout. Um, and so there's a couple of other little tweaks, but those were the big things. So I don't know if you have any questions for me.
Any questions from the board?
I will go sit down. Just wondering if we agree to this, do we lose our negotiating power? Because we can hold that over their head.
So if upon agreement to this, you can stay there. It's a yes or no.
Let me add one other thing. Because we don't want them changing their mind again. We said you have to give us a signed copy before we take this back to the RDA Board. So we have a signed copy of this agreement because we don't want to play games. So we do have an assigned copy by Paul Willey of this agreement that sits in front of you, just FYI.
With this, to execute this now, once this is approved, it, the ball is in whose court? Um, is it?
It would be in theirs at this point because we're, we've done our part of this.
Actually, is it, is it Rocky Mountain Power that's gonna do the work or their contractor?
Yeah, it's it's kind of both, but that.
Under their, under, I'm sorry, ace.
RCH, or RCH, yeah.
They'll have an agreement with Rocky Mountain Power for the work to be done at an exchange rate that they agree to.
Okay, all right, thank you.
And we're still gonna have to do our part on the other side of the road as far as those lines go. All that's included in that, yeah. All that infrastructure. No, no, that's different, but it's all included in this participation agreement.
And if you remember, some of this will pay for upfront for the other side of the road stuff. They're actually gonna do it because it costs way more to have like another construction company come in and do our stuff on the other side of the road. So once they get stuff done, there's, remember, we talked to you about potentially using some of our ARPA funds to pay for our side of the road upfront, and then this agreement will reimburse them for their stuff on their side of the road.
Do you need a dollar amount in the resolution or can someone just make a motion to approve the resolution?
I just approve the the resolution itself because that's, it's included in there.
Okay, so basically, just to resummarize, what you changed was you just took out the gen- general terms and put in.
More specific, yeah.
Specific dollar amount.
Right, right.
I'll make the motion to approve resolution R twenty twenty two dash zero four as stated in the packet.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Sure, second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? All right, Ms. Marigoni, will you please poll the board?
Hanson?
Yes.
Mr. Hilton?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Mrs. Merrill?
Yes.
Mr. Arnold?
Yes.
Well, that's exciting. This has been a long time coming. And I'm I'm excited for it. I think we, I think we got a really good product. So good job, you guys. Very well done. Um, any other comments for this meeting? If there's none, we need a motion to adjourn. Please make a motion. Okay, there's a motion. And a second. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
All right, we're adjourned.